Okay, if we're recording, then Cynthia, would you officially start us and take the role, please? Is she, hello?
Did you, sorry, I, did you guys hear that? I guess, I guess not.
Go ahead and get started. Take the role, please.
Sorry about that. Planning Commission meeting is called to order on May 26, 2021 at 7:03 PM. Roll call Chair Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Reese.
Here.
Commissioner Blakemore.
Here.
Commissioner Giblin.
Here.
Commissioner Herring.
Here.
Commissioner Perre.
Here.
And I'm gonna circle back. Commissioner Cornell. Doesn't appear to be here. And you said Trustee Taylor is not here as well. And Commissioner Glasser, I believe, was also gonna be out tonight. And I haven't seen her. So she is also out.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you Cynthia. All right, so let's, let's do the approval of the minutes from the meeting of April 28, 2021. Does anyone have any comments or changes to those minutes? Thank you Cynthia, they were very complete and detailed. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any comments on that?
All good here.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as written? Draft minutes as written?
Motion to approve minutes.
That's Commissioner Perre.
Yeah.
Do I have, do I have a second?
I will second.
I think that was Linda.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Blakemore.
That was Commissioner Blake.
Okay.
Lynn, Lynn, Lynn is camping tonight.
Oh, that's right, she's not. Never mind.
Okay. We'll, we'll run down the list. Chair Williams?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Commissioner Giblin?
Yes.
Commissioner Herring?
Yes.
Commissioner Perre?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
And did we get a Commissioner Cornell? Did he come to the meeting?
I don't think he did.
He won't join us Cynthia until later. He canceled.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Okey doke. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move to public comment for anything that is not currently on the agenda. And I see we have three items listed under public comment for non-agenda items. And the first one is, oh, is Rick Hendrickson here?
I'm here.
Okay. Okay, you're up first, Rick. Would you like to speak on a non-agenda item, please?
Sure, thanks a lot. Yeah, this is Rick Hendrickson, Fire Marshal with the Netherlands Fire Department. Just wanted to make you aware of a new pamphlet basically out from Colorado State Forest Service on fire mitigation. It is in the packet there or a link to it. It's just a major overhaul of what they put out before. Got a lot of really good information, good overview. It's got checklists. And then more information if you want to dig deeper into various topics. So just wanted to bring your attention. It's really timely now and a lot of people are getting evaluations done by wildfire partners. And hopefully moving forward on some good fire mitigation. So that's all.
Thank you, Rick.
Hello, Rick, do you want to discuss any of that at a future meeting?
Oh, we certainly could if you wanted more in depth on it, but most of it's pretty self-explanatory if you just want to. Everybody takes time to read through it and, you know, I'm generally gonna be here to answer questions if you have any.
Okay, well, I think we'll do that. People can get in touch with you or with town staff if we have any questions. Thank you for sending that along.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, second item, I guess there are two public comments from Kathleen Chippy on, I think one was the previous SRU discussion from the 28th, or maybe both of them, I guess, from the previous meeting. Is Kathleen there or Miranda? Do we, I realize that it's, her comments are in the packet.
Yes, and Kathleen, I don't believe typically has the ability to speak in the meetings. And so her request is that the Planning Commission review both of her comments here.
Okay, so does anyone have any comments or questions on her, her public comment? Comments? No? Okay, then I guess they're on the record, so we'll, we'll proceed then. And does anyone else have any public comment that are on non-agenda items that they would like to speak to? Okay, having heard none, I will close the public comment for non-agenda items and we'll move on to our action items. Okay, our first action item is the special review use application related to outdoor sales, eating and drinking at the Caribou Room at 55 Indian Peaks Drive. So I'd just like to start out that, oh, wait a minute, let's see. Okay, I'd like to start out that two Planning Commission members, Roger Cornell and Jim Reese have recused themselves from this application due to conflict of interest. Planning Commission members with a conflict of interest must not vote and must refrain from attempting to influence the decide of other members. Because these Planning Commission members participated in the public hearing on the 28th of April, I am instructing the Planning Commission to disregard all comments made by Vice Chair Reese and Commissioner Cornell during that hearing on the 28th of April. You must not factor their comments into your decision-making process. I would also want to remind the other members of the Planning Commission that they need to be fair and impartial for hearing this application. If you feel you cannot be fair and impartial, or if you have prejudged the application, please speak up now. Or if you have a bias, please speak up now. Okay, I believe that Jim Reese would like to make a brief statement on his recusal.
Is this, can you hear me? It's Billy. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, Billy.
Yeah, I just want to make it known, I have gone to, I went to a few shows at the Caribou Room last year outside. And, and have, and, you know, intend to go to some this summer. I did talk that through with Jennifer and just, you know, I wanted to make it clear, you know, that that has happened. You know, I have gone to these shows. I do feel like it can be impartial and fair and look at, look at all the many, well, look at all the information we have in front of us, the plentiful information we have in front of us and make, make a grounded decision objective based on criteria for approval and things that are proposed.
Okay, thank you Billy.
And Steve, this is Karen Blakemore.
Yes, Karen.
I'm in the same situation as Billy. I have attended and enjoyed both indoor and outdoor shows at the Caribou Room. However, with all of the applications that come before the Planning Commission, I plan to evaluate this one based on the facts and the criteria for approval.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Jim Reese, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, so before you drop off until the end of this action item, would you like to make a brief statement?
Yes. Peter Fiori, the applicant for the Caribou Room SRU, requested that I recuse myself. The reason that was given was a 2016 court case against Peter Fiori for attempting to influence a public servant. The case involved my wife, Alicia Reese, when she was still the Town Administrator for Netherlands, and she had to testify against him. After the case was resolved, I made some negative comments on Facebook about the applicant. For this reason, Peter Fiori does not believe I can be objective with my vote regarding the SRU. I judge all cases on the evidence and testimony given and vote for what I feel is in the best interest of the community. My personal feelings about the applicant have no bearing on the SRU, and I was prepared to vote impartially in this case. However, rather than let past personal issues with this applicant become the focus of this meeting, I will recuse myself from the vote on the Caribou Room SRU. Thank you. I'll sign off now.
Okay, thank you Jim. Appreciate your honesty and forthcoming. And I guess Miranda will text you, I guess, when we're ready to, when we're finished with this particular application?
Yeah, correct.
Commissioner Williams, may I interject for one second, please?
Uh, who's this?
This is Peter Fiori.
Yes, Peter.
I was just, I was just gonna ask you if I could respond to Commissioner Reese's comments since they were directed at me?
Oh, okay, please do.
My, my reason for asking for Jim Reese's recusal was not from the 216 court case. My, the reason I asked him to was for the second reason he quoted was because I felt like he wasn't gonna be able to be impartial because of things he said about me personally. But it was also because I testified against his wife in a harassment case. So that also should be included with his statement. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. All right, well, Jim, any, any comment on that? Otherwise, we will see you later?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I believe we still have a quorum, even though Roger and Jim are not, have recused themselves. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
We have, uh,
Four. I think you have four.
We have five.
We have five, I believe. Okay, with that, let's, let's continue. And Miranda, would you like to please introduce this agenda item for us?
Yes. So tonight before you is the continuation of the consideration of the public hearing and special review use for an application related to outdoor sales, eating, drinking, or other commercial activities for the Caribou Room at 55 Indian Peaks Drive. And it was submitted by the Compound Corporation, who does business as the Caribou Room. I reviewed the aim in its entirety at our last meeting, so I just kind of want to hit the highlighted points here. Again, the zoning for this property is general commercial, where outdoor sales, eating and drinking, or other commercial activities is permitted via an SRU, which is why this is before you. As a reminder, the Caribou Room does currently have a temporary modification of premise, which allows them to serve food, alcohol, and host outdoor events in their parking area. And that's been in effect since June 12th of 2020. And it's set to expire June 12th, 2021. However, Caribou Room is seeking that extension if they don't receive the permanent SRU in this fashion. At the last meeting, there was question about their previous SRU that was in place for the mixed use that was there. So in the aim, we provided an overview of that SRU agreement. It was determined, though, that the 2013 Special Review Use Agreement has been terminated because Sweet Wave Audio is no longer operating as a music production company at the property. And that was a voluntary relinquishment of rights by the owner. Therefore, because the 2013 Special Review Use was no longer in effect in June of 2020, the Caribou Room was allowed to apply for that application to operate outdoor events and sell food and drink in their area, their parking lot, for that temporary use permit. So while we did include it in the packet along with the meeting minutes, I do just want to reiterate that that agreement is not in effect and that the terms of the agreement, including the conditions, are no longer binding on the Caribou Room or the town. At the last meeting too, there was a request of the applicants to receive letters of support. The applicant did receive over 100 letters and also submitted a petition. And those are included in the agenda packet. I've also included in the agenda packet the letters of opposition we received, as well as the petitions. And then in addition, you received videos that showed the decibel readings of the event itself that they had this past weekend, as well as a comparison to the highway, so that the commissioners could see those reading levels. There was a video of their recent event and a photo of the smoking area, because that was a noted area of concern, is the, the kind of people gathering and smoking and the fire danger. So those are kind of the quick highlights from between last meeting and tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions prior to turning it over to the applicant.
Is anyone on the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's Billy. Hey, Miranda, you said that the old SRU was known void even before 2020? And remind me, what was the reason you said?
Yeah, it's because they dissolved the music production, Sweet Wave Audio, and they did that in the, yeah, they did that in the spring of 2020. So when they applied for their temporary use permit in June of 2020, that's why we were able to issue that to them, because they had dissolved that company, therefore making that SRU null and void.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from Miranda before we turn it over to the applicant?
Uh, this is Karen. I just want to thank Miranda for the organization of this application and separating the opposition and the support statements.
Yes, thank you.
Email inundation, I'm sure, but yeah, it was nice to have it separated out.
Yeah, I counted something like 130 plus letters and two petitions. So yes, it was quite the, quite the month. And thank you, Miranda, for forwarding those on as well, rather than wait for the packet.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions from Miranda? If not, let's turn it over to, I assume, Peter or anyone else from Caribou Room?
I think I'll be doing the speaking today, even though I think I put my best minds and faces forward last meeting. But I'm, I'm here, I'm here to represent the Caribou Room. And first of all, let me go ahead and continue that thanks to Miranda. I think you guys have a great town employee in Miranda. She is, I don't think anyone's been able to kick my butt as pleasantly as she does. She really is a very, very impartial, yet somehow seems to be pleasant throughout the whole process, which is really something special and it's clerk. So thank you to Miranda. I want to make sure to thank the town for letting us do what we've done over the last two years. We probably wouldn't be there if we hadn't been able to do this last year in the summer. And then, of course, my largest thanks is to you, the commission. I know that, I know how it is, sitting on boards on contentious issues and how it sucks because somebody's gonna be bummed and somebody's gonna be happy and there's really nothing you can do about that except try to find a happy medium. And I really appreciate you, all your consideration and time that all of you as volunteers have spent on this matter. It's, it's a really important point, I think, that we're trying to get across. So I'm mainly here to answer questions, but I just want to address a couple of things. I apologize for the unpleasant trees that have taken place legally. I want to make sure that everyone understands that nobody speaks for the Caribou Room but myself and my managers. So we didn't even solicit anybody to send letters or petition until Thursday. So we only had the petitions out for three days and the letters you received beforehand were from people who had heard about the meeting or whatever and been word of mouth. And if anybody had been at all rude or anything, that definitely was not coming from us. And we do want to make sure that you understand we are coming to you hat in hand here and hoping we can negotiate a new SRU. So let's, let's just go ahead and I'll, I'll open up the floor. I guess, before, before I take questions, let me just go ahead and give you a little history here. I've been a Netherlands resident for 27 years, though I just recently moved out of Netherlands for family health reasons. Eight years before living in Netherlands, I was living in Gold Hill from about 1989. Um, and so I've seen a lot in Netherlands. I, I produced every Nedfest sometimes for no money. I produced every Frozen Dead Guy Days. And I've been fighting with Commissioner Cornell about music in Netherlands for 25 years. And as dismayed I was that he didn't recuse last week, I, I'm not gonna speak much to it, but I do think that he represents a very important demographic. And that though we shouldn't consider or even talk about what he said, we do need to acknowledge and understand that there are people who don't want to hear any music on a summer evening, and I understand that, and we should discuss all that. But I do want to make it clear that nobody speaks for the Caribou Room, except myself and my managers. And if anybody else has been speaking, I hope you understand that they are speaking for themselves. So yeah, just back to the history. I started Sweet Wave Audio Incorporated in my garage in Gold Hill. And I brought it to Netherlands and operated out of my garage in Netherlands for many years, and then I moved down to Lewisville. We were a pretty successful company down there. I brought it up to Ned and why we had an SRU in the first place was because I wanted to have two companies under one roof. And even back then, in 2013, there was quite a bit of confusion about what I was applying for. And a lot of people came out to speak against the idea of us having a venue when actually we were applying to have two businesses under one roof. So for two reasons, I signed that SRU, which I found to be a very unfair SRU, but I signed it because, well, obviously, I wanted to be able to have my other company in the same building where I could have one office. But the other reason was I had a whole bunch of freaked out neighbors and friends. I, I lived for 18 years and raised my family for 18 years, about quarter mile from the Caribou Room as the crow flies. And I, back then even, was not interested in antagonizing my neighbors or my friends and the people that helped raise my children. So I was, I was happy to sign, sign that SRU, even though I found certain parts of it to be very unfair and restricting. So COVID comes along and Sweet Wave Audio was never actually doing that well up here in Ned. And so when COVID hit, the whole industry tanked. And I had to choose between one of the two businesses and my days of being in a field producing concerts for four days standing in mud. I'm 55 now and I'm just kind of over that. And I'm, I'm pretty much done producing concerts and that was then. This is now. I really like to just focus on the Caribou Room. So what that did was, I guess, it terminated the SRU. And now we have no SRU, and that makes people nervous. So I'm here to negotiate a new SRU. And it's hat in hand. I understand that this is a slightly contentious issue, and I would like to put fears to rest and answer as many questions as I can and see if we can come to an agreement.
Okay, thank you, Peter. I'm sure that there'll be questions and so appreciate your candor. Before we open it up to public comment, I'd like to go around to anyone on the Planning Commission that has any particular questions for the applicant. We may do that now, so anyone, go ahead, please.
Steve, this is Karen Blakemore. I do have some questions. So I, I looked at the the letters and within the support letters, I was curious to find out how many of the letters from people, families who support the outdoor music venue live in the adjacent neighborhoods? And that would be the Sundance Neighborhood and the Indian Peaks. And so I found there were one, two, three, four, five, six families, plus Wild Bear. And the majority of those can hear the music. One cannot, and they're all in favor of the Caribou Room having the outdoor music venue. One of the letters I was a little bit concerned with from Marty Benick. He had signed the opposition petition and then he redacted from that. And he said there were issues were presented for him to sign that, the opposition petition, and they were presented under false pretenses. So, so I'm a little bit concerned about the opposition petition because of that statement. Let's see, specific questions for Peter? So I'm wondering about minimizing the impact to the adjacent neighborhoods as well as compatibility with future land use. So the, the compatibility with future land use, the Caribou Room is surrounded by public open space. And that's not to say that will remain forest in the future. It could be a park. It could be, there's a desire in the community for a dirt bike track. It could be a dirt bike track. And so I'm wondering about how compatible an outdoor music venue would be with future land uses. And the other, the minimizing impact. So my question to Peter on that is, what will you do to minimize the impact of the outdoor music venue on your neighbors?
I appreciate your question, Commissioner. Thank you very much. Well, there's several different points you're bringing up there at one time. I am happy to work with the town in any way to lower our impact. I feel like we've worked very hard to have minimal impact on the neighborhood as well as town. Speaking of, speaking to the letters of opposition, one of the things that really got my goat, and I think, you know, I was on three different BOTs and I, I was chair of the Sustainability Advisory Board for a couple of years, and I was also a member of the Sustainability Advisory Board for a year. I had my run with the DDA. I really know what it's like to be on a board in Netherlands. And no matter what, there's always gonna be some people who come out and say, hey, I don't want this here. I don't want this. there's always gonna be some people who come out and say, hey, I don't want this here. I don't want this here. It is too close to my house. I mean, we had people coming out against preschoolers and things like this. And no matter what, you can't please everyone and, and I, we do, we do our best. I'm not looking to have well, let's start, start at the beginning. I feel like we're discussing whether or not I can have live music outside and this is why we're gonna have to change the way the SRU is written currently. I'm applying to, to have commerce outside. Use by right and SRU are very different things and it concerns me when we talk about things that I'm already allowed to do as opposed to things I've come to uh, ask to do. So um, to, to speak to the letters who say, hey, why don't we have this music down at the reservoir? This truly proves my point that they are not speaking with a community mindset. Because if you want to have music down by the rez, which believe me, I tried to get happen, I, I tried to have happen for years. Spent, you know, many years on the BOT trying to get this passed. In fact, we did pass it three times. But there's no money to do it. But if you think about it, if you put music down by the rez, which I hope we truly hope we do at some point, there's a lot more houses that'll be impacted than there are behind my big berm. I have a giant berm between me and the neighborhood. And we have never received a complaint and actually Roger never complained. He came over and told us we were non-compliant with our SRU and we, we told him that we had no longer had an SRU, but he hadn't complained. We've never gotten a complaint and if we did, I would address it. I was um, I gave all the neighbors my phone number and my personal cell phone number. I will do whatever it takes to lower the impact. I'm not interested in antagonizing the neighborhood that I love so dearly. We are stewards of the land around the, the, the property. We take care of fallen trees and things like that on our own dime. We pick up trash that sometimes is maybe eighty years old, literally, um, old rusty cans and stuff like that. So just to, to bring it back to those letters, you know, I, I noticed a few themes and, and I know that um, the person who redacted, I think there was another redaction, but I could be wrong about that. What had, what I had heard was the petition going around town and of course, I don't know what they said, but what was told to me was, and I even heard it in the audio that was told to you, that we would have five hundred people milling about, roaming about the neighborhood at all, wee hours of the morning, I think was the specific language. And that we were going to have festivals and things uh, of such. But I, you know, I'm here to negotiate an SRU and this is the kind of thing that you can put into an SRU and say, okay, you're not allowed to have festivals. You can even say, you're not allowed to do music. I'm actually applying to do commerce. Um, and the reason I need to be able to do commerce is because we have other events like weddings, uh, celebration of life, uh, memorial services. We have um, a, a lot of fundraising that takes place at the Caribou Room. And we've even had parties where they wanted to cook outside and we wanted to be able to serve them drinks. So even if we get to a point where you, you all in the BOT decide, hey, this isn't gonna work for our town. We don't want to have outdoor music in the evenings. Then I'm still going to be asking to, to, to do commerce in my land because I need to be able to make money with this commercial property that I purchased. And there are rights that come with uh, when you purchase commercial property. And we're talking about laws that have, you know, have been written a long time ago and deliberated over and redeliberated over and revoted on. And those, those laws are in books. So it, I, I have to say, to speak to the previous SRU, I felt like it was extremely unfair that I was arguing whether or not I could have an, a venue when actually use by right allowed me to have a venue. And maybe your legal counsel will clear it up. Currently, I think I'm allowed to have music outside. I'm just not allowed to charge for that music outside. If we were gonna get into the weeds litigiously, I'm not interested in getting the weeds. I don't even want to carry, carry on this idea without your blessing. I've come hat in hand, like I've said repeatedly, because I want to have a discussion about the direction of town. And are we, are we gonna be a town? And there's, there's a totally legitimate desire to have a sleepy, quiet town. Or are we gonna be the town that are in the guiding documents? The Invision twenty twenty document and the, and this, and this board's guiding document, the Comprehensive Plan. Those, those documents are, those were, you know, we had three hundred people crammed into that gym, even though the gym only is allowed to have a hundred and nine, I believe, with our new Fire Marshal. But we had like three hundred people doing Invision twenty twenty and it was the people talking. And it was, you know, argued and delineated and went over and over again. But that document was finally voted on and agreed on. And I feel like what the proposal before you, from us checked off all the boxes in both the Invision twenty twenty and the Comp Plan. In fact, I would challenge someone to tell me or at least discuss with me what we don't check off in those two documents. We are as sustainable as it gets. I am a, a firm believer in sustainability. And I think that the, the decision before you is one of these deciding moments for Ned. Do we want to go this direction of a quieter town? Or do we want to have a thriving cultural scene? And it's a real discussion and I'm not gonna say one's right or wrong. I, I will add to that before, before I turn the floor back over. We'll add to that. I have done sound or produced shows um, going north in Gold Hill, Jamestown, Lyons, Estes Park, you can go east from there, Nywha, Longmont, obviously, Lewisville. Um, I, I'm forgetting. I've, I've done sound for forty years. So it, it's um, what I'm trying to say is that a thriving, most of those communities, the town actually paid me. It wasn't from, it wasn't from private enterprise. Netherlands has made some decisions. Some of them are forced to spend their money in other places. I don't know if anyone knows this, but the county wanted Netherlands to disincorporate or de-incorporate uh, maybe ten, twelve years ago because we didn't have a good enough septic um, wastewater treatment plant or a water treatment plant. And we spent an incredible amount of money and resources to build these things. We have chosen that we want to have a police department. Well, the police department's expensive and though I agree with that choice, you look at Lyons, they don't have a police department because they spend their money renting police and they subsidize a music, an outdoor music program in the summer. You know, and so Netherlands has made the decisions. We know, we, we have, the, the town, if you look at the budget and I encourage everybody to always look at the town budget. We spend money on things like subsidizing the ice rink and tennis courts and um, fixing up trails and, and you, you know, there's, there's very little play money, but we really have a shortcoming in cultural, culture and the town doesn't support any. And when we lost Ned Fest two years ago, or was that last year? That was a real disappointment to me especially because we had worked very, very hard and it was some basically it was lack of support from town is what I think ended up killing that fest. So I cannot speak for the organizers of that fest. I, I am discouraged that Netherlands doesn't support culture and the arts and music more. And so I feel like I'm coming from the private sector offering something that is needed. I'm filling a need and I'm trying to do so in a very compromised fashion. I'm not trying to throw outdoor evening concerts like the Mishawaka. I'm trying to throw evening, early evening shows that we can have younger and, younger and older audience and that we do. And I feel like if you really look at social sustainability, it's important that we have places like this in Netherlands. You know, you, you don't have a town if you don't have schools. You don't have schools unless you attract younger families. And this is the kind of thing that attracts younger families to a township is if you have cultural events. And we will always, of course, work with town and I am, like I've said and repeatedly said, I'm not interested in antagonizing the neighborhood that I s- live and loved so long. And I think that we, we, it's very important to say what we're trying to accomplish, which is an evening family event. And you all as an advisory board, since you are not the actual deciding board, the BOT is, as advisory board, here's the opportunity for you all to say, okay, no music after ten, no music after nine thirty, no music after dark. You can put, you can start saying things like that. If you vote no, you take yourself out of the conversation. You can't vote no and then logically make recommendations. So you want to, you want to make recommendations if you can and, and now's the time before we go to the BOT where you guys can say things like, okay, no, you can't do this during the week, only on weekends. That's something I'd consider signing for sure. So I think we're here at the, at the advisory level. So we can have a discussion about what you all think is reasonable for the town. And if you don't think it's reasonable at all, then that's how you should vote, of course. But I remember when I voted against voting on Barker, I, it was, it was passed, actually. I voted against it and I read it almost immediately because after it was passed, I no longer was in the discussion and I couldn't make any recommendations. Like, okay, how about we do uh, canoes only or something like that? I, I was out of the, I was out of the conversation. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm appealing to the Planning Commission as the you guys are, you know, you're not the captains of the ship, but you're the first mates, right? You're steering the, the direction of town here and this is one of those decisions. And I'm looking for recommendations and I'm looking for discussion.
Okay, great. Just quickly, um, when I, I read the opposition letters, I came up with four different impacts that we, that we might want to minimize. One was the folks um, along the fence line outside of the property. They were concerned about trash, toilet paper, smoking. The other one was uh, noise level. The third one's off-site parking. And the fourth one is um, the start and end times and frequency.
Okay, um, I'll speak to all those. So
Then I'll leave it for other commissioners to ask questions.
I, well, I'm sorry I'm so long-winded. I'm kind of famous for it. And just cut me off whenever, uh, I, I encourage the Chair to cut me off whenever. I'm repeating myself. Let's um, start with trash. So we um, as good neighbors, we, I actually, we pay people to clean up trash even outside of our property line. And the, the property looks a heck of a lot nicer now than it did when I bought it. Oh, the surrounding property, I'll tell you that. We have uh, been in constant contact with Public Works about what trees should be removed or what trees should be taking, uh, you know, fall, fallen trees we cut up and we leave, we leave the slash piles and and Public Works comes and takes care of them. So I believe we have lowered the fire danger um, pretty drastically. Which I guess, yeah, it's all about trash. So and, and, and I noticed also a, a, a fifth thing, which was the smoking. And I feel like we have always had smoking outside. Um, and now we have it in a better place since the SRU said you have to do it on the north side. I believe where we put the smoking is actually safer places. It's got a twelve-foot high wall and surrounded by parking lot. And that I think is relevant to the trash discussion, but as, as stewards of the neighborhood, I personally love spot zoning. I think spot zoning is an excellent thing when you want people to take care of the surrounding public land. I, I was in Amsterdam a few years ago. And I remember being struck by seeing a house in the middle of a beautiful park. And what I realized was, oh, the people in the house keep an eye on the park and they help take care of the park. And that, that's the situation here is we want, we want the whole area to look beautiful and, and to be safe. And so we do fire mitigation even past our property line with the graces of town and Public Works. So that's trash. Noise? Um, I'm not sure what you're referring to by noise, um, but I, I definitely strongly reject the notion that music is noise. And um, I, I understand that it is impactful and that people can hear it. But we live in a municipality. And the, the sound of commerce is not to, you really can't avoid it. Um, and this is the sound of art. So, and music. And so I don't think it's noise. We always do a great deal um, to, to mitigate the nor- the sound. We don't have the technology to truly steer the sound. And what I mean by that is uh, Ned Fest was very loud when we first started Ned Fest and I'd bring in bigger and bigger PAs to Ned Fest. Well, technology took over and Ned Fest was able to pay me enough money where I could put in sound systems that I could actually steer the sound. And the impact on Ned Fest audio-wise went way, way down. I can't do that in front of the Caribou Room because the money isn't there for me to put in a really high-end sound system that I can steer the sound through phase cancellation and such. So I've put the building between myself and the closest neighbors. We only put up two main speakers, one subwoofer. I am in constant monitoring of the uh, sound pressure level, the, the SPL, uh, dB. And um, you know, last year I think we went over seventy-two, maybe four times. And each of those times uh, caused a, a big rift between myself and the musicians and I was very angry with them for turning up. You know, really in the PA, it's only, it's only the vocals and the band really, we, you know, we just talk them down as much as we can and say, look, we have neighbors, blah, blah, blah. And we are um, actively trying to book more acoustic shows. And the acoustic shows don't have drums and they don't have electric guitars and things like that. So, you know, we are very um, aware that there are people around us and neighbors around us. Off-site parking, we have completely addressed. So last year, there were people who was parking outside because we had the social circles. Last year, we were the first show in the state. You know, we really uh, felt like we had a grip on what COVID was. And we created these social circles, which is a model that everyone has now copied this year. But we were the only show around and what we had thought at that time was, okay, if you're, if you bought a social circle, you're gonna have to park out in the street. Well, really half of the parking lot at the Caribou Room wasn't being used. So now that the threat of COVID has, has subsided a great deal, we have everybody who's bought any tickets park within the parking lot and they park behind the building so they can't those spot, parking spots, you can't see the stage. The stage can only be seen by half the parking lot. So we've opened up the back parking lot for anybody else who is buying social circles. So you will see a considerable reduction in parked cars outside. Now there are what I call poachers. And poachers are the people that bring picnics. They park across the street and they stress me out for sure. And I have done what I can with them. In fact, we're thinking about taking the old Sweet Wave Audio trucks, which have not sold yet and parking them out front and blocking the view of people so they can stop poaching. But we had poaching around. I did call Larry Johns. And you know, the police are aware. I have no authority outside of my property line. And all I can do is do my best to dissuade them. And I do because I, I am fully capable of being very angry looking. So I, and I go out there and I'm like, you know, the soul, this isn't a sold-out show. You need to get, you know, move along, folks. Um, this is, you're poaching and we, we've gone through a lot of effort to try to uh, to be a profitable business. Okay, so that, um, what was the fourth one? I'm sorry, Commissioner?
Frequency, start and end times. I think you addressed those.
Yeah, so uh, what I'm proposing and I'm happy to sign in an SRU is something like music from five to nine and never go outside of that window. You know, we, I think the latest we went last year was maybe nine fifteen, right around the solstice. I mean, uh, you know, when, when the sun's out, we can do it. I don't know. There's not enough money made at a show with only a hundred and twenty people to put up a big light show and a big sound system. So it's really not a concern that you have to have, though I'm happy to sign an SRU saying, I'm not gonna do something like that. But you know, a hundred and twenty people at max, like, you know, the, the, the other thing that keeps us at a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty, really, if every social circle and every parked car had people in it. Our kitchen can't serve any more than that. They're already, they're already just jammed. It's a small kitchen. And so we have no real reason to ever sell more tickets than that. So the concern for us We have no real reason to ever sell more tickets than that. So the concern for us having more shows, we can't. We can't accommodate that. So we're not gonna have a bigger show. So the size show is, is not gonna, is not gonna be something you have to worry about. If you wanna put restrictions on me on times, on me, I'm sorry, I'm speaking for the company. If you wanna put restrictions like Caribou on times, that is something I'm very happy to negotiate and talk about because I think that. That would help put some minds at ease. So I'm, I'm, I'm totally in, into us having that discussion.
And what about frequency?
How often?
How often?
So, and this is interesting, I'm glad you brought it up. This, this summer will be the busiest we'll, we will be. And in fact, it might sink us. We did not anticipate COVID to end all of a sudden. And we now will have the ability to have shows indoors. And certain shows belong indoors without question and they belong late night and they belong. In a much more rowdy atmosphere and that I built a tank of a room. I, you know, there's five layers of drywall on some spots, including air gaps. And the great irony with the fact that I built this cave of a room. It's that I couldn't put any windows in because of sound. Windows, you know, pass, sound passes right through a window. And so in the summertime in Colorado, who wants to go into a cave? And see a show? Well, nobody. And we actually were starting to have to shutter during the summer months. And it wasn't working. The Caribou Room was falling. We weren't, we weren't gonna be able to survive this business model. So. You know, we, I have to figure out a way to create revenue in the summer months. And when this came along and COVID hit and the town was so very gracious to offer us the ability to be able to do something outside. I took it and it worked and we got an incredible amount of positive feedback. So I said, hey, what the heck? Let's, let's, let's go back to the table and talk about a new S R U.
Okay, um, what about noise, noise level, not requiring a noise variance?
Oh, sound level? So, so there, you know, there is a, the town has a very good, uh, noise ordinance. And they also have the, you know, they, as you know, if you looked at the fee schedule and the fee schedule, I think is something everyone should pay attention to every budget year. The fee schedule has it so you can apply for variance. Um, we, like I said, I think we needed it four times last year. I'm happy to pay for the variance every time. There's no, I, I don't wanna risk going over the, the limit. Especially since it's a thousand dollars per minute of a fine, which is a little hefty. But, um, I'm not interested in that. I'm not interested in us having loud bands. And in fact, uh, to speak a little bit to the previous point. We are not gonna be as busy ever again as we are now. Because we booked outside thinking COVID was gonna at least go well into the fall. Um, I will, I, there's already shows that we booked for outside that we're gonna probably do inside if we can. Um, because, you know, we, we, we've got this beautiful venue with an incredible amount of technology in there. To sound really great and do a great performance. And, um, it's just kind of tragic to put them under a pop-up tent outside. When we can actually serve five hundred and forty people as opposed to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty.
Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, thank you, Karen. Um, so, um. I wonder, Karen, if I could ask you to, uh, stand in and, uh, chair shortly. My computer has just told me it's about to reboot. To install updates of all time. So if you wouldn't mind, um, continuing to, you know, go around the planning commission. Uh, for questions for Peter and then I will rejoin as soon as I can.
Okay, that sounds great.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll be back shortly, hopefully.
Uh, Billy, do you have any questions for Peter?
Yeah, um, I, I, I actually, Karen, you kind of. Pretty much read my mind. I mean, I mean, you know, I did read. Every single email that we got, all hundred and thirty or more and, um. And I read the petitions and I, and I read. Pretty much everything we've gotten. And, um. The, the one email that stood out to me the most was that Marty guy who, who accused, or wanted to be redacted from their. From the, uh, put opposition, um, petition. Because he felt like issues of the petition were presented under false pretenses, which really just struck me. Um. So, yeah, thanks for bringing that up. And then, um.
I can speak to that, Commissioner Giblin.
Uh, yeah, sure. That'd be awesome, actually.
So I got a call from Marty and said, what the heck? But he didn't use the word heck. Are you doing over there? Are you gonna be doing this thing at, at one in the morning? And I said, what are you talking about? And he said, I just signed a petition. Because I've been told that you're gonna be doing festivals and you're gonna be doing this at all hours of the night. And I said, that's just not true, Marty. And come over and see what we're doing. And he had already seen what we're doing. So he knew and. Really, the economics just aren't even there, but I'm happy to put these things into a new S R U. To guarantee that they don't happen. Um, so I think Marty was a little put off. Um, I know Marty and he's not, I wouldn't say he's a friend of mine, but I do know Marty. And, uh, so he believed me and, uh. I think that the rest is history there. I think somebody else was gonna redact. I mean, there were, there were definitely. People who, after, I got a lot of calls. When, um, Roger and Karen walked around and they were talking about, and it was very disingenuous. It was. Um, inflammatory, it was, um. You know, it was alarmist what they were saying. And if I had heard that spiel, I probably would have signed it too. And it just wasn't really, it wasn't, it was, it really helped, that kind of. That he was sep, he was dividing the community and I wanna bring the community together and agree on something. And instead, there was some very divisive language. Being said to some multiple neighbors of mine who called me. Um, many of them hadn't signed the petition, but were concerned. And, um, you know, that's why we have an opportunity here that I think everybody, both parties would be interested in. Is renegotiating the S R U. And, and, uh, I think something that was brought up at the last meeting was. Why can't you guys wait a year and do this next year? And I just wanted to address that. I think it was you, Commissioner Giblin, who said that. And I wanted to just say, there's, there's multiple reasons why we're trying to get it done now. For one is here we are six weeks into the process. And if you got any kind of idea about how things, the speed of government, especially the speed of government in Netherlands. We'll be lucky if we can get this done by the beginning of next year. Um, but, um, really. The, the parking lot needs a lot of improvement. Um, it's got a lot of standing water and mud in there and it, I, I need to spend of. Uh, we need to spend a very, uh, a considerable sum of money to fix the parking lot up if we're gonna do this for more than just one more year. Um, the kitchen is on the second floor. And I pay, right now I pay, we pay several people to run up and down those stairs when we could really use a dummy waiter, but those things are about ten thousand dollars. Um, there's a lot that I would improve in the experience as well as in trying to improve the overall brand of the Caribou Room. Um, and if you know, if you've ever started your own business. You don't invest if you don't know if you can do it again next year. You just don't do that. And so. I'm, I'm trying to get a jump on this, see if we can figure something out for next season. Um, because then I can go ahead and start improving the product now, which is what I really wanna do. I think it looks terrible to be underneath a pop-up. With two speakers that are kind of crooked. And I'd fix things like that. Uh, but I'm not gonna spend that money unless I know I can do this for more than one season.
That totally makes sense and thanks for that clarification. Um. And, yeah, I mean, the two things I, I wasn't gonna talk about, like I said, Karen's kind of read my mind. What was the, you know, redaction from Marty and then the, um. And then the, um, just kind of how you would address those criteria for approval she brought up, and specifically the. Minimizing adverse impact on neighbors. Um, that's, that's really was the main one. And, um. Yeah, I appreciate everything you just laid out was very, um, clear, comprehensive and complete. I just, uh, I just filled out, um. My, I wrote a letter of interest because I'm going for reappointment to this board. And one of the things I made clear is that, you know, I've learned a lot from. Um, and I listed town, to town residents and applicants first is in this job on the commission or in this appointment on the commission. I'm learning a lot from. All the applicants and, um, all the residents as well as P C members and town staff. And so I appreciate the. All that, um, history and all that kind of, um, clarity you just gave us.
Yeah, thank you very much. I, if I could respond to your chairwoman, I'm not sure who's calling the shots right now. Uh. Can I respond to that?
Karen.
I, 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 I didn't know if you wanted me to call you Karen. Okay, thank you. So, um. Yeah, I, I really think that, um, you know, I, sitting on, I'm being, having experience on the B O T, I think that. I wish every member of the B O T would sit on the planning commission first because you really are getting your pulse. You're checking the pulse of the town. And this is one of those decisions that suck because. Like I said before, somebody's gonna be bummed out and somebody's gonna be happy. And. You can't make everyone happy all the time and, and there's nothing like the planning commission to sit through some of these meetings for you all to understand what it's like to be on the. Board of Trustees. Um, but I do think that you all should run for the B O T after you've done this. There's no question. Because you now really kind of are getting an introduction on, hey, how ma, meetings work and be what the pulse of the town is. I mean. We're turning to you all right now to help make the decision on which direction are we gonna go here. That's all.
Thanks, Peter.
Uh, Karen, it's Miranda. I just wanted to note for the record that Steve is, I was able to call him into the meeting, so he is on the phone with us.
Okay, Steve, so, um. When I have asked, I, I've spoken and Billy has. Oh, oh, Steve. Steve can't talk? I can't hear it.
He just got on his computer now, so he should be able to.
Yeah, I'm back. Uh, Miranda, you can disconnect me. I, I think I hung up on you. Sorry, okay. Sorry for that. Uh, thanks, Microsoft. Yeah.
So, so Steve, this is Karen.
Yes.
Um, two commissioners have spoken, myself and Billy.
I heard, uh, I heard yours, obviously, and I heard the, uh, a good part of Billy's as well. So, thank you.
We need to give the other commissioners a, a chance to ask questions.
All right, um, let's see, um. Chris Parry, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Do you have any questions for Peter?
Well, a lot of them have been covered. I have been like N C A P's for rides, brought people back and forth from the hotel up there. Uh, my major issue was the poachers. And the other thing is just a factor of. Uh. Listening to the neighbors that object and putting something in, in the S R U that. Works in their favor as well. You know, putting a, a, that hard time and a soft time for music. And things like that, having it like, okay, there's music from five till eight and then there's a hard close at nine. Or something like that. So you don't have the neighbors being upset if they have friends, if they have relatives or things come to visit for them. And they have to deal with this. I'm totally, uh, cool with the whole thing of having wedding receptions and other venues there. The biggest problem that I've seen in all of the letters of objection is people on the outside of the fence carrying on. When they should all be inside of the fence area.
Would you like me to speak to that or?
Yes, go ahead, Peter.
So unfortunately, there's not much I can do besides trying to block their view because they are not on my property. Um, one of the things that we spend money on in this town is the police department. And I would love to see Larry or any of his, uh, deputies. Um, come up and, and go ahead and, and scoot these people along. The, the problem here is that I don't know if they're breaking any laws. So, um. You know, we've got a barbed wire fence that was there before we got there. And I, I, I left it up because we had the, the studio in there and everything, but, um, you know. I can't do much about people who are doing that because it's not on my land, our land. So. Um, I will do everything I can to dissuade it. We oftentimes will let people in for free. Some of those people just can't afford to pay the ticket price. Our ticket prices are high right now because we're trying to make up for incredible losses. That we suffered over the last fourteen months. So. You know, we can do what we can do, but at a certain point, um, if. The Netherlands cops were to come up and say, hey, well, you're drinking a beer on public land. You're gonna get cited. And that I think would help a great deal, even just once, one or two showings. But I don't, some of them are not breaking any laws. And if you go to a show, say Gold Hill. Which was one of my first, uh, events that I produced was in Gold Hill. Um, they have a huge poaching thing going on. There's people that are sitting on roofs and houses all around the Gold Hill Inn. And there's really not a lot you can do about it. Um. If they're breaking the law, if they're smoking cigarettes and tossing them into the woods, well, then not only do we have our eye on them, but we will turn them in. I have an abundance of security.
Chris, do you have anything else to ask? We'll have a chance to come back, everyone, for further discussion. These are just pretty much questions for Peter at this point.
Um, I'm good. I'll probably have another review later.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, let's see, um. Stephanie, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, sorry.
Oh, okay, go ahead. Uh, if you have any questions for Peter, otherwise we can, uh, we'll have discussion later.
Yeah, I just have a question on the noise, and this is maybe a question for town too, on how the noise variance works, Peter. So do you find out sort of. As you're measuring a show and then you realize that a musician is playing something too loud and. And then you have to go to town, ask for a variance? Or do you know in advance, oh, this is gonna be a louder band, I better go ask for a variance? How does that work?
So I definitely know what bands, when they're coming, what they're bringing when it comes to volume. Um, but I've been in the business for so long, I can tell you pretty much what they're, what, how loud they're playing just by standing there. Uh, that being said, we do have a calibrated, uh, D B meter. We have several. Um, and I make sure that everybody is compliant with, uh, current noise ordinance. Um. So how, how it works, and Miranda, I'm sure can speak to it, is we, we know, we know that there's a, there's a band that might possibly go over. And so I'm. You know, last year I just took out noise variances the whole time. This year, um, for example, this opening weekend, which I think I put one, one, uh, video on there for, in the packet for you guys to look at. You, you know, it was a bluegrass band and a Beatles cover band. Um, I probably should have taken one out for the Beatles cover band, look, but as it turned out, they were, did never went over like. Seventy-two or seventy-four at the property line. So it just wasn't a problem. Now, this weekend coming. Unfortunately, we have a reggae band and a reggae, reggae music is, uh, bass-oriented music and bass. Um, I don't know if you know anything about physics, about all this stuff, but bass is omnidirectional. And bass goes in all directions and it carries through the land. So I, I would, without a question. Take out a variance for that band. Now, to be honest, if I had been able to open inside, that band would go inside. Without, you know, without any hesitation. That's a great band for inside later at night. Um, so really, we, we just take out a, I just go, I. A caution, air, air, air on the side of caution and I, uh, I take out a variance almost every weekend.
And then, um, Miranda, what, what's the process for, for granting that? Like, can anybody just get a variance whenever they want, as many times as they want?
I mean, people can pull variances, you know, whenever they, they feel that that's needed, you know, because they're gonna go over a decibel level. And so when we receive a noise variance, we have a series of conditions we have to evaluate. Which include type of sound, proposed location, proposed time and day. And then just history of the, excuse me, of the noise variance permit and whether we've ever received complaints. Um, so, so last year, as Peter had noted, there had been a concern, but a formal complaint was never issued. And so we, we felt that. And so we we felt that it was appropriate to continue to issue those noise variances. Um, now, you know, had it been different and we were receiving continuous complaints, those are taken into consideration. Um, we also really evaluate the applicant's willingness to work with town. And and that's been a big deal about, you know, making sure that if there is a concern, the applicant does in fact address that. And so those are kind of the evaluating criteria. Now, if one of those kind of was deemed inappropriate or we didn't feel like a noise variance was was a proper for that event, then we would deny the request. Um, but in the case of the Caribou Room, I believe they pulled the twelve noise variances. Um, and we felt that they did adhere to all those conditions.
Thanks. I'm just asking because I guess that's one of the things that as we do move to a post-COVID situation, um, whether that would be something that Peter that you would be amenable to in the SRU to just say, we will keep it below accessible without the need to pull a variance every weekend. Because I feel like if that's the concern, especially for surrounding neighbors, then arguing that we can just pull a variance every weekend um doesn't really address some of their concerns related to the the level of sound. And if the things that would you know you know would go over and again, in a post-COVID world, would would go in as an indoor event where the sound could be mitigated.
Well, I I I'm sorry, can I respond to that? Is that a question? Do you want me to respond to that?
It's a question. I'm just curious to know. Yeah, I'd like your feedback on that idea.
Yeah, absolutely. So uh I would need to see the language, of course, before I signed it, but of course, absolutely. In fact, you know, we have a talent buyer, Kimba Stefana, who you met last week. I'm sure she's on here, maybe not. But she um, she 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 and I work together in choosing who's going to play. Um, and as I started imagining how things would look post-COVID, one of the ideas I had was having an acoustic act outside where we did a dinner hour, dinner two hours. And then we move inside for the later evening. Um, and honestly, I'm fine with us discussing the options about having quieter performers outside only. I will say if we get to the point where I'm restricted in the fact that I can't I can't hire some bands because they have drums, I probably wouldn't be interested in signing that. Um, but I really want us to come to an agreement. So um, let's hear the proposal. Seventy-two is tough for some bands. And unfortunately, this weekend coming, this one band, um, Green Buddha, I think their name is, they are going to be a little loud. And um, and we're gonna probably go over that seventy-two DB by one or two, maybe three DB. And so I'm gonna pull a variance. But I think you guys will see this summer that I'm probably only gonna pull maybe four to six variances in total. Um, and that's just to be careful. I lecture my engineers every single event about the neighbors. And I say, look, we want to keep doing this. If you want your job, you can need to make sure that the band plays at a reasonable level. And I think we achieved that last summer. Um, so I really didn't think last summer was very impactful when it comes to sound. And I I did check in with my neighbors quite a bit. Um, so we we'd have to see what that looks like, Commissioner. I just I'm I'm not sure what the language would look like. And if I couldn't, if it was a hard stop at seventy-two, that could be a problem for us. So maybe we could talk about several variances a a season or something like that. You know, I really want to get back inside. I make a lot more money when it's five hundred and forty people than I do with a hundred and twenty. And we need to do that. But um outside, I think that we're going to move more towards an acoustic model just because it's more pleasant for kids. And we're really having a, you know, one of the biggest complaints about the Caribou Room's business model was that we didn't have earlier shows. And this is just so wonderful outside in the parking lot when we've got a bluegrass band or a Grateful Dead cover band playing. It's not too loud and you've got thirty kids running around. And you've got all these neighbors who are hanging out, talking to each other, having a great time. It just feels like a community. And I can't say it enough that I would love to see everyone in the in the town uh political arena come and see what we're doing and check it out because it isn't really a whole bunch of flatlanders coming up and a giant busload full of frat boys coming up. This is not, it's just not the case. Um, and I'm not interested in that. What I am interested in is offering something for families. And I love it.
Thanks. That's helpful. Yeah, I maybe I mean, we should definitely, like you said, you know, sort of a conversation, but I I think I would like to put that idea on the table because I do think that if we're simply saying, yes, the town ordinance, the town ordinance is seventy-two decibel, whatever, but we're going to allow variance every single weekend, it's sort of, I know, kind of makes the makes the point of the town ordinance relatively mute if it's going to be just a default that it doesn't have to be aligned with. And I think that for neighbors who may be in that um in that immediate area or even, you know, um, across across the way, since it can be heard across town, that might be one of the things like, hey, you know, we're 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 not issuing these things at every single concert. I think that would be something we could.
I'm definitely in agreement with that, and I would be happy to um sign something to that effect. I just wouldn't want to do a hard stop at seventy-two for every single weekend, but maybe we could agree on um several uh several times, you know, several times a year that I would be able to take out a variance. And I agree with you that that it's kind of an abuse of the variance, but I also was just trying to cover my bases because the fee schedule has such a very expensive ticket attached to it when you break that seventy-two. And um, I think that it's an excellent point you're making and that we should probably really move forward with that as a recommendation for the SRU where we are only allowed to break the variance maybe six times or some or have to apply for a variance, something like six times for a whole year. Um, I think that would sound that sounds fair to me.
Okay. Um, and the other question I had was related to the outdoor number, which you said have as a hundred and twenty. Is that established by some kind of fire ordinance or just simply your capacity? How does that work?
So uh, so we have forty-two spaces that we rent. The capacity that I'm the 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 benchmark I'm using for the capacity is how much we can serve. So I have twelve employees hopping and they're all expensive during a show. And we have these forty-two spaces as well as like six social circles that can have four people in them. But what my my capacity has reached and how many people I can serve. So the parking lot actually has two hundred and ten parking spaces, but because of COVID, I made the spaces twice as big. So everyone could feel safe. Um, though, as things loosen up, we're going to probably move those spaces together. But that being said, I can't serve more than a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty, and let's be real, a hundred and forty, we got two once last year. And, you know, my kitchen was pissed at me for selling that many tickets. They couldn't keep up. It it hurt the product. It hurt the show when you have beers that are not cold or when you have drinks that the ice has melt melted or your crab cakes that you're paying a lot of money for are not hot anymore. So we have to keep, I need to keep the product that I offer at a certain level of quality. And if I try to sell more tickets, that will decline rapidly. So the economics have determined what our capacity is for outside. I I hope that answers your question.
It does. Um, I guess, though, my question would be, what is that theoretical capacity? Let's say that all of your folks become ten times more efficient.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, you can't your kitchen, you know, you can't serve up to what's that number? That's the up to number that we would be, we should be aware of in a post-COVID world.
Yeah, so that I think that's this is this is exactly why we're here to talk about this. And this is something that should be on the SRU is what will be what would be my allowed capacity. And I think that's a very good point to make and to put on this SRU. One forty we did once, and like I said, my crew was angry. And the product had suffered. People were waiting up to forty minutes to get their their orders. So it will not go above that because of serving. But I I can see a situation where if I wanted to have more than a hundred and forty people in the parking lot for an outdoor event that you put in an SRU, that I need approval. A a one-time approval for that, that I would be happy to sign because I'm trying to do this all in goodwill and be transparent. So if I say was if we were going to do some kind of like mini festival or something where there was more than two bands and we were going to do a whole afternoon of music, I would be happy to have something that says I have to come to town and ask for it. A technical review, I think, would be the word words we'd use, that I would need a technical review for anything over a hundred and fifty people in the parking lot for an event. That, I think, is completely reasonable and understandable. And if that makes my neighbors happier and that makes you all happier, tell me where to sign.
That's helpful. I guess the other question that I would have is for town, which is that um I think we've been operating off the one twenty number. Is there a maximum that would be considered safe for, you know, unsafe at some point that the fire marshal or somebody or police, I don't know who, um, would then come in and say, this is the maximum capacity for this parking area um during a music event? And I would be curious to know if the town, um, if if that was something we would need to also think about.
Hey, Miranda, I'd be looking to Rick because I think from a town standpoint, we look at, you know, that that space from a parking, from a car count. And so, Rick, I don't know what's your thoughts on that because I feel like there isn't an occupancy level in outdoor spaces necessarily. It doesn't impact their occupancy number indoors?
Yeah, I think it's outside um is generally not counted towards any occupancy. So that's generally not a concern. I mean, parking, if the whole street was was bottled up with cars, that could be a problem. But that's uh, it sounds like that is well watched and I've never heard it being a problem there.
Can I speak? Um, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, could I could I add to this?
Oh, okay. Then I have a question to for Rick. Go ahead, Peter.
Oh, I don't mean to interrupt. Go ahead if you need to.
No, go ahead.
Okay, well, um, so back when I was on on the boards and doing things, I thought that the performance area, which now is not necessarily the performance area area anymore, needed a sellout number. And I think that people involved in events like Amanda McDonald and Chris McFarland from Ned Festival, whoever's doing an event down there.
Anyway, we can we can make something that you can live with, like High Left Jack.
I'm I'm sorry, Rick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, oh, um, now I can see myself better. That's weird. Um, anyway, I do think that the BOT should have a discussion about sellout for a certain square footage of of land. Um, partially because of the impact on town. It's something that I had recommended ten years ago and would uh really support as somebody who's an event organizer in my day. We need to have a sellout point for Frozen Dead Guy Days. There needs to be a sellout point, even if it's the whole town. We really should have a sellout point. So um I think that that's something that should be determined and work with the fire department, and we should have a sellout point for any square footage of any uh gathering. And that could be put into the the public gathering permit or whatever the permit is that you have to get when you have more than twenty-five people.
Thanks. That's that's helpful. Um, yeah, I wasn't sure what the process for that was. So um, just from a health and safety standpoint, it'd be wondering how whether if the town had a role in that or not. But since it's an outdoor venue, it sounds like Rick is saying that it's a little bit, a little bit different. The other question then, I guess, from that health and safety standpoint is that if you had one of these events that were jointly kind of indoor and outdoor, do you I presume you have a mechanism of some way, even if you were to 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 make sure that the indoor capacity doesn't overflow. So you had a completely sellout event and you sold all your indoor tickets and all your outdoor tickets. How it's making sure everyone who's supposed to be presumably that's under the assumption that they're indoor and outdoor and not everyone's trying to go inside. So do you have a mechanism for making sure that we wouldn't exceed the indoor capacity?
Absolutely, yes. So um, we have, you know, on on a larger event, we have six security. Four of those are inside, two are roam in the parking lot, sometimes five are inside, depending on how rowdy the crowd gets. I'll tell you a little secret. I never sell more than five hundred tickets. And part of that is, well, for one reason, we were previously rated at five fourteen and then then Rick came along and re reassessed the situation and gave us a capacity of one forty. Um, a hundred four uh five hundred, excuse me, five forty, five hundred and forty people in that room ruins the show. It's just too packed, too many people. So I never sell more than five hundred tickets. Now, if and and no, we haven't done this thing. I'm waiting to get approval to do something outside and then inside, which I think would be really neat. The outside performance would have its own ticketing and the inside performance would have its own ticketing. So um, and I haven't even truly thought it all the way through, to be honest, Commissioner. And it's something that I'm not sure how the commerce would work. But yes, because the the max outdoor is, you know, one thirty, as we discussed here, there would be a totally different ticket. Um, so I can see most people who bought the outside ticket will have bought the inside ticket. I could see that happening. But it'd be two different tickets and the indoor, when you get through, we'll go through the doors underneath the um awning, you get clicked in. And when people walk out, they get clicked out. So we know how many people are in the building at any given time. Just in case Rick were to give us a surprise visit, he could see exactly the number of people in the venue and uh make the determination if we're being compliant. Um, so we uh we really care about how many people are in the room because I want the product to be good. And I don't want people to be shoulder to shoulder bumping into people. And you're now post-COVID world. Post-COVID world's going to be really, really interesting for our industry because, you know, all the obvious things. So I don't think that we're going to be back into a room of sweaty people jumping up and down, spitting on each other, not for a long time, if ever again. You know, um, so who knows? But yeah, we have a very, very strict uh way to count how many people, how many bodies are in the building.
Thanks. That's that's helpful. Um, and I just as a, you know, I I also read all the letters that we received and I I completely acknowledge that, you know, what happens outside of your building and on the street is not something that you have authority over. So I do think that I would just make a note that we should, if this is something that we move towards, that we should have a conversation with town police about what can be done along that street, whether it's no parking signs or, um, you know, uh, but whatever it is, so that certainly the street doesn't get clogged for residents.
No parking signs would be a problem for us because sometimes people like to park on the street and you're allowed to park on the street. But I think right now uh what Larry Larry, uh, excuse me, um, Marshall Johns should should consider doing is coming up and stopping the alcohol consumption that's taking place that I'm I'm witnessing. And I think that would take a big dent out of this problem if we stopped people from poaching because they're drinking. And that threatens my liquor license and it threatens safety. So I would love to see the police come by occasionally. Um, it only takes a couple of visits and then people kind of get the idea, especially if an arrest was made for drinking in public. So I encourage it.
Thanks. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Um, I think you may have, I I was going to um follow on to the question uh regarding uh indoor and outdoor. Um, and you know, how you could would control people going in and out because obviously people outside have to go in or if they want to order food or use the restroom or vice versa, I I assume. But um, but you you keep track of who's in and who's out, so you never really you uh avoid the 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 problem of um.
Yeah, we have wristbands. So if you have a ticket, sorry to interrupt you. I didn't.
No, go ahead. No, don't.
So we have a we have wristbands and we uh have all sorts of different colored wristbands. And somebody with an outdoor ticket, for example, would be using the porta potties that we have outside. And I don't think I would open up the room inside while the outside event was uh event was taking place. Now, I am thinking on my feet here because I really haven't thought exactly through what that would look like. It's just an idea I had that would really be great. Because so many people complain to me about how we just do late night shows. And we really did kind of build a a nightclub. And though I would like to call it a music venue, some people call it a nightclub because we do shows that really don't usually start till ten o'clock. And a lot of people want to see music and then go home and they, or they want to bring their kids. And, um, I'd like to fill that need. It would help, um, it would help get us out of the hole that we're in now. And, um, yeah, it's very, it's pretty, you know, crowd control is something I'm really adept in, to be honest, because I've been producing festivals for decades.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Yeah. Cause I was also wondering about weather constraints, you know, like if, um, let's just say that severe weather hits and people want to come inside for safety reasons and how you might, uh, handle that.
Well, since I don't ever want to move from the model of the tailgate party, even though it's not really a tailgate party, because we don't allow BYOB. We don't allow you to bring a cooler, whatever. You, everyone has their car. It's now the people even in the social circles have their cars in the back. I'm not going to allow people inside, um, who are part of the outdoor event, especially and most outdoor events at this point are rain or shine. So on Saturday, this last weekend, when it was our opening weekend for the season, we had some interesting questions that I hadn't gotten before, where people were asking if they could bring pop-up tents. And, uh, yes, of course they can. And I love it. And as long as they're part of the spaces that are along the border of the property and they're not blocking any sightlines to the stage. So, um, you know, weather in Netherlands is really scary for event producers. And, you know, lightning is a very serious concern. And if you can see lightning and hear thunder, we clear the stage. Everybody goes away. Everybody goes into their cars. You're safe in your car because you're on rubber tires. But we clear the stage immediately. Um, we have, you know, I've got all sorts of grounding schemes happening to try to mitigate if lightning were to strike. But, um, lightning is a serious problem, but we wouldn't allow people outside to come inside. All covered in muddy boots or whatever. They would have to go to their cars. I can say that right now even.
Unless there's a tornado.
Unless there's a tornado, then everyone's gonna come in, you know what I mean? And we're gonna, we're gonna have a party, tornado party.
Right. Okay. Um, and then final question, um, which is sort of a follow-on to Stephanie's was this, uh, idea of, uh, indoor/outdoor combo. So did I hear you correctly, uh, allude to the possibility that like, if you have a very loud band, that maybe you might schedule those inside, because obviously you could probably still hear them outside if they're very loud. Um, as opposed to always just being outside. Is that, is that a possibility?
Absolutely. In fact, some of the bands that we've booked for the summer, you need to book shows about three or four months in advance. And if it's, if it's a touring band, and that's actually one little point on side note I wanted to bring up was that in, in respects to sustainability, the entire lineup has been local artists. Um, but occasionally we do get touring bands. That being said, you have to book three to four months out. So we have the summer mostly booked, penciled in, as we say, even though we've only released tickets for maybe six shows. Yes, we have a, a national act booked in August or so, late August or early September that without question I'll put inside, because this act will sell the 500 seats that will sell. So yes, the, you know, I, if I was allowed to do a show inside, the, the reggae band this weekend would be inside. And, and that's, it's because of COVID that they're outside and because we've sold tickets for outside. I mean, really it caught us all off guard, the entire industry, when the CDC said, hey, we're good all of a sudden, you know? So, um, a lot of shows, even Red Rocks was caught off guard. And, um, we're adapting, but, um, you bet, I'm, I'm not interested in having very loud bands outside. I, I spent six years trying to prove myself to the community. That's why I feel like, um, I'm in a position where I can ask for, uh, a new SRU. And I, you know, if, if the band is gonna be able to sell more than 120 tickets, I'm gonna put them inside. You bet.
Okay. Very good. Um, all right. Um, I think I got everybody. Did I miss anyone? Or questions for Peter? Okay, um, we'll, we'll have a chance to come back and, and do a, a quick discussion afterwards. But right now I'd like to go ahead and open up for public comment. Individual speakers will have three minutes to speak. Um, we will keep time. There it is up on the screen. Excellent. Keep track of, um, time. And, um, as I said, the public's invited to provide input, but I would strongly encourage not to repeat any input that was previously submitted. It's now part of the, the record of this, uh, aim. Unless they really want to add to their existing input. So in other words, please try not to repeat or keep saying the same thing over and over if it's already part of the record. So having said that, we will open it up for public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? To this, uh, SRU? Wow. Okay. Going once?
I think I talked a lot.
Well, you probably answered a lot of questions. Um, okay, well, um, having heard no one that wants to speak, I will go ahead and close the, um, the public comment portion. And, uh, we'll bring it back to the planning commission for discussion amongst ourselves. So, um, with that, uh, we'll, um, we'll go around, we'll just do the same, uh, order. If you have anything else to add or any, uh, issues that you would like to bring up, please consider the various points of the SRU in your decision-making process. And if there's any contingencies that you wish to add to the, um, to a possible SRU, then, uh, you know, please bring that up and we'll just keep a list of those going. As Peter said earlier, just to, um, make sure that we have a, a list. So, uh, let's start with Karen. Go ahead, Karen.
Okay. So I heard, um, Peter say that he wanted to change the SRU from a music venue in the parking lot with eating and drinking in the outdoor space to outdoor commerce. So, uh, I'd like to discuss, to find out from, uh, Jennifer if that can be done from, um, town staff and from the commissioners about what they think about that. I'm, I'm not really sure what the term outdoor commerce means. So, um, that would be the question I would have with changing that.
Okay, maybe we should let, uh, uh, town staff, uh, Jennifer respond to that.
Thank you. This is Jennifer Madsen. Um, the, the application is before you tonight because of the outdoor sales, eating and drinking, or other outdoor commercial activities. Um, that's why the special review use application is before you. You know, I guess that is something that you could consider as the planning commission, if you wanted to change it to outdoor commerce. I think that is a broader definition than is what is existing in the draft SRU. So it would allow for more activities. Rather than what is specified currently, which is probably more limited.
And so I'd like to hear from Peter about why he would like to change it to outdoor commerce.
Yeah, excellent point. So, um, we've had, um, a few benefits and things like that. Well, this is one of the, one of the things and there's, there's a couple others. We've had a few benefits where, um, people were at the gate, um, collecting money to actually park. Uh, and, and so I need also would like to have a gate person collecting money. I also don't want to have language that says the SRU. The way the language was concerned me, the way it was written, because it looks like, should I, uh, if I'm in breach of the SRU, then I'm no longer allowed to serve food outside. I need to hang on to that use by right. And so I don't want to have that jeopardized with the, the way the language was written. That's why I'd like the language to be addressed for the exact reason why the SRU flag was raised, which was outdoor commerce. The other thing, the other outdoor commerce, commerce that I'm imagining, let's say, for example, I didn't get the liquor license or something expanded to the borders of the property. Is that even this, this last weekend, um, somebody who makes jewelry had asked me if they could set up a tent, a pop-up tent and sell their jewelry in the back lot. That, so we have vendors and artisans who come into shows and set up their, their little shops and their wares and their art and for, put it for sale inside. I would like to be able to offer that outside. So, uh, these people can then, they pay me either a little bit of commission, us, I keep saying me, there's actually other people involved. They pay us, um, either a, a flat fee or a commission, um, to be able to sell their art or wares outside.
So I'm looking at the, um, use group table. And there is a row for outdoor sales, eating and drinking, or other outdoor commercial activities or establishments. So I'm wondering if that would be an appropriate, um, use for the, um, SRU agreement.
Is that a question for attorney or me?
Uh, both.
I'll go ahead and let counsel answer.
Oh, so the outdoor commerce definitely fits within that category. I mean, other outdoor commercial activities certainly is outdoor commerce. So it would fit within that category. Again, it's extremely broad, um, but it does fit.
Or we could itemize the specific uses that, um, Peter has mentioned, which would be, um, ticket sales, music, eating, drinking, uh, and vendors.
You want us, you want me to speak or counsel?
Would that be acceptable?
I would absolutely consider that. I, I can't, I can't give you a yes for sure. I would need to think about that. Um, that sounds totally reasonable at this point to me. If we want to dive in, because I, as I'm hearing in counsel's voice, a concern at how broad the outdoor commerce, um, language is, and I can understand that. So, um, yeah, if we want to dive into the specifics, give me a day or two to think about that. Um, and, uh, we'll put that in the SRU and, um, I'm happy to work with your attorney or have my attorney work with your attorney on exactly how the language will look. But I, I had a, my immediate response is that sounds totally reasonable to me. I'm not looking to do anything crazy, but you know, we, we do have video shoots. We have bands that do video shoots and they do stuff outside. I'm, I just let me think about that for a second, but nothing impactful, that's for sure. Nothing that would change, uh, have any more impact than what we already are proposing. So I think that that, that's a, that's a good way to dial this in. So I'm, I'm not opposed to anything like that.
So Jennifer, this is Steve. So do we have to rewrite the draft SRU before we, um, vote on it? Or, or do we just create a list like Peter's talking about and then that gets, uh, put into the SRU?
When you, when you go to vote on it, um, one thing that you would want to do is discuss what conditions you would want to include in the SRU. And if one of the conditions is, or, um, one of the terms of approval is, um, is negotiating the actual, um, use that is being permitted, you can provide some direction to me to work with Mr. Fiore and his attorney in terms of narrowing, narrowing down the uses, um, that would be identified in the SRU. So you don't have, you don't have to have a, a final SRU agreement. But you can provide direction as to what you're voting on and what the desire is for moving forward.
Okay, okay. That's helpful because I, I would like to obviously narrow it down a bit. Um, but, but Peter also needs time to think it through as well. So.
I think we should, we could start, we could go ahead and start with a list that I know that I'd be happy with right now, if you wanted to go ahead and dive into that. I think that, uh, Commissioner Blake Moore's list was pretty good. So if you want, just go ahead and lay those out and, um, we'll already, we'll go ahead and amend the SRU right here, though legally, you know, the BOT is the one who makes the final call on this. So, um, you know, this is kind of a rough draft, but just on a side note, I've never once, as a BOT member, voted against the planning commission's recommendations. Yes, you've discovered, I think recently you had the BOT vote in a different way that you all voted. So let's, let's go ahead and write this down and we'll add it. And then if I have any strong objections, I'll make that at the BOT level. Um, but I certainly don't have any problems and I don't think that as I speak for the whole organization, have any problems with the list that, uh, Commissioner Blake Moore just laid out.
Okay. All right. That, that's very good. Thank you. Um, so, um, Cynthia, do you have, um, the, the list that we talked about or should we, um, reiterate that?
I, I actually wrote it down too.
Oh, okay. Perfect.
Outdoor, outdoor ticket sales, eating and drinking and vendors.
And music.
And music.
Yeah, because the, that's important when the last one, because I think, I'm not sure about the peddler's license and how that works, but uh, often if we have a less expensive talent, if we have less expensive talent, they'll put out a tip jar. Want to make sure that's okay. I think we need to be able to sell merchandise of our own out in the parking lot, like, um, I'm talking about t-shirts and things like that. So I don't know what that language would look like, but I think that I can't imagine a scenario, oh, I need to be able to sell food and drink outside.
That's included there.
Okay, great. Yeah. Because if our point of sale system goes down, which is, uh, actually they order from the parking lot, but it goes straight to the point of sale inside. If that goes down, we will need the option of being a little flexible there and being able to take cash outside if we're delivering some food to a car, food or drink.
I have a question. You mentioned, you mentioned something about, um, parking, obviously the way it's set up now, if you're parking inside, you know, you, that's a ticket. Would, would the parking be any other, like, would that be commerce in, in any other way or would that need to be stated separately? Or did you say something earlier about there was, there was a, a non, you know, like a fundraiser and someone was outside taking money for parking? That's what I heard. Maybe I heard that wrong.
No, you heard that correctly. I, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. That, that's, that's for the lawyers to, to actually get that verbiage, but you're, I think you're understanding me completely.
Okay. Um, Peter, is there anything, uh, some other events that you talked about, like weddings and reunions and stuff like that? Is there any other activities that they might have that perhaps a concert wouldn't have that you want to add to the list?
Um, so I, this is, I guess, a question for counsel. If I have a party and I have had a couple of parties where they rent the room, but they hired catering and the catering took place outside. I'm wondering if that falls into some kind of category of commerce that we're not, we're not hitting.
I think that that's covered by food and drink.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think we're good, uh, chairman.
Okay. Uh, well, you can obviously think about it some more, but we can start with this, this initial list. I think that's a really good start.
Yeah, so do I.
Uh, Karen, anything else?
A maximum of 150 people. If the, the car room desires to have an outdoor event with more than 120. with more than 150 people, they would come to town for a technical review.
I've signed that.
Six, six noise variances a year. And I'm, I'm wondering about the hours. So some of these events, you know, the current summer concert series runs from like five until 9:00 PM. But then we're, you're also talking about other events like weddings or parties or festivals. And those would be outside of, I imagine, outside of the five to nine hour. I think we need to set a hard stop time of say 9:00 PM.
Is, is there a quiet hour, hard stop, quiet hour time in town already?
Well, the noise variance goes until 10:00 PM is what Peter said and then.
That's what I wondered about.
Yeah. And then Peter wanted to respond.
I'm sorry. Go, go ahead, Peter. I'm not sure if it's the technical review process that we overdid down at Nedfest, but we had a hard, hard stop at 10:00 and it was, at first it was a hundred dollars a minute and now it's a thousand dollars a minute. 10 is a fair number, time, and the reason I say that is because 4th of July, for example, we used to have fireworks. The town used to help fireworks and now they no longer do. But it doesn't really get dark till about 9:30. What I would propose to, and to, to circle back just a little bit, what I would counter offer, so to speak, would be anything over six noise variances or anything over 9:30 or nine or whatever, then I would go ahead and need a technical review. I think this technical review idea is very good for both parties. And we could use it quite a bit in this SRU if we wanted to. Because I think it's a good way for the town to still have a balance and check on, on the Caribou Room. And I'm fine with that because I know, I know in good faith that we're going to be able to stick to the SRU. But I, I, I am a little concerned and I will not be able to give you a commitment now on six noise variances. That one I want to think about carefully. Though I, it doesn't sound unreasonable to me right now. I think that's kind of restrictive language that concerns me. So I would have to talk to my counsel about that as well.
Right.
We could put it into, you know, into the draft and then as you mentioned before, you know, that's something that can be ironed out later.
I think the BOT is going to step in at that when we get to this kind of minutia. They're gonna, they're gonna step in and, and really tell us what's going on at that point. So yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it going in as a rough, a rough, rough proposal. I think it's great. And I really like the idea of a TRC, a tech, a technical review committee. I think that's what it stands for. I like that idea in case somebody did want to do something outdoors that was beyond the hours of five to nine. In other words, a daytime event. I would like to do that with Town's Blessing. And the TRC is a great way to do that. It worked very well for other events that I've produced in Netherlands over the last few decades. The TRC was always a good way to kind of rein in the promoters and say, okay, you, you need to have parking lot attendants to take care of these six parking lots. You need to make sure that we have X amount of first responders available and perhaps pay for first responder. Technical review are, are really, is really an important process that we use for large events in Netherlands. And I'm fine with TRC being added just so we can kind of have a check-in with town and make sure that everything's going okay. And if I say, no, shoot dang, I have one more, I have one more band that might go over the 72, I need to have one more. Well, then I'll have to go in front of a TRC. TRCs aren't free for anybody because they involve the fire department and they involve everybody, but if you want to put that in there, I know I probably wouldn't object to that because I think that's a great way for us to kind of check in with town, make sure that we're still in everyone's good graces. And, but I will remind you that no matter what, there's going to be some people who are going to speak against this always.
I have a question, just to clarify, like who's on the TRC? Is, is this established each time? Or is this already a pre-established?
I actually wanted to clarify, Billy, I'm glad you brought that up. We actually have TRCs bi-weekly now and we have for quite a bit. And so a TRC involves myself, Karen, Marshall John, Fire Marshal, Hunter Public Works, so that includes typically Chris Pelletier and Nikki Dunn. And then any additional parties we feel we need to involve. But right now we do them bi-weekly to assess any sort of events. Maybe non-traditional noise variances, whatever might come up. So it's, I guess, kind of for Peter's notes, they're regularly scheduled.
Miranda, you might've mentioned it, but I just wanted to make sure people knew that Marshall Johns or Sergeant Jen also join us.
Yep. Yeah. So it includes, includes, and Don Baumhofer as well. Just because oftentimes there is impact that leads into the community center. So it, in essence, every department head plus fire department that's already meeting bi-weekly.
Maybe a TRC isn't the right thing for, if I'm going to ask for an extra noise variance, but I, I, something of that nature, I think would be fine with us.
Yeah, I sort of like the idea of a TRC where it's like a check, check and balance to just, you know, make sure that both parties are happy. I, I do like that idea.
I think a TRC is appropriate just because it's not, you know, it would just be a matter of when we prepare the agenda, we would just be sure the Caribou Room was, was that week. So we're assessing it that week. And so I actually think that is the right format and, and I guess the, the benefit is it's already an established process. And so it's not like we have to go out of our, our team together.
Yeah. And we, we have it scheduled and so it would just be another item on the agenda.
Perfect.
That's the recommendation for the BOT. I'm sorry to interrupt.
So I have dotted down three conditions that would require a TRC. One is capacity going over 150 people. The other one is the number of noise variances going over six per year. And the third is the hours of the outdoor event, anything outside of the five to nine PM hour. Timeframe.
Can't commit to that, but I think it's a good start.
Okay. So that's all I have.
Okay. Greg, thank you, Karen.
Billy.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I guess just kind of push off that, that list, the three things. I, I, I would potentially, I, I think five to nine might be too early. I mean, like, like if the town noise ordinance, whatever is 10, for sake of a hard stop, let's say. I don't know whether you want to have it buffered at nine and then the TRC, you know, gets, gets contacted or goes in front of them. If you think it's going to go towards that hard stop. Or if we just make 10 the hard stop, I'm just, I just, I'm just not quite as stuck on the nine, I guess.
I'll definitely object to nine. I'll, I'll object to nine at the BOT level, just so you know, but yeah.
I, well, yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess for me, it's like, I don't know why we're getting inconsistent with just town noise ordinance. It doesn't make sense. To me, to me. And then I guess the 150 seems reasonable i- i- if, you know, you're able to look in your crystal ball and, and like Stephanie said, and all of a sudden your employees are more efficient or whatever, or you add some system to your food production.
I like it. I like it because I'm not interested, I'm not interested in having more impact. I like the 150 number quite a bit. As long as that does not include employees. But 150 tickets, I'll never do that over that in the, in that parking lot unless we have some kind of extraordinary event, which then would trigger a TRC.
Okay. And then the last one, okay, thanks. And the last one is the, the six noise variances, I guess, you know, may, maybe just six seems good for now, or you know, get that fine tuned for the BOT.
This summer, this summer wouldn't work for us, but I think summer's in the future. That sounds pretty reasonable to me. I know that I, I would probably sign that. I, I can't commit to anything, of course, until I speak with my, my attorney. But I think that that's a, a really good proposal and I, I think it sounds fair. So.
Okay. Yeah. I guess I'm also thinking about like weddings. I mean, I grew up Irish Catholic with huge weddings and they get loud. So yeah.
Yeah. The thing about weddings is I, I wouldn't have a wedding band outside. And I, I, I can't say for sure on that, but the thing that we offer weddings is, remember I, I was talking about the dungeon? I built a dungeon. It's not a really great place for weddings inside. But what we offer is a backup. So let's say you're going to go out to Kayla's property and you're going to get married out on Arapahoe Ranch. And the weather turns horrible. And you can come over to the Caribou Room and since you're having the reception at the Caribou Room, you can have, we've had ceremonies inside the Caribou Room because they got rained out. They were going to go get married over at some park or whatever. And then the weather turned really bad and they called, we have a crying bride on the phone saying, please, can we do this? And we're like, absolutely, of course. So the outside, we've never had an outside wedding and I don't think we will. It's just not that nice of a parking lot. But I think what we offer is a backup and I could imagine, of course, with, with the, with the fire department signing off on the tent, that they decide to put up a tent in our parking lot as a backup for the ceremony. Or to have, if it's a beautiful summer evening, they want to be outside and they want to be able to go outside. I'm not going to have a band, well, I can't say never. I, I don't like saying never, but I, you know, I don't, when somebody rents the Caribou Room, they want to rent that stage. They want to rent that incredibly nice PA. So I, I don't know about this one. This one I'm going to think about a little bit because weddings is a wild card. And I'm not sure how we can do something there that would be fair to everybody, but I don't want to shut the door on opportunity. So I'm not sure what we're going to do there.
The reason I bring it up is that Kim, Kim had mentioned that, you know, last month is one of the things, you know, it was talked about concerts, but I, if I remember correctly, I think I remember talking about weddings and, and you know, memorials, fundraisers. So I just remembered that and I guess that's where I just wonder if the six becomes, you know, take, are you taking, you know, is everything taken into consideration?
So I would require the wedding party or the party, for example, we have a, a celebration of life memorial coming up in June. And the organizers have been calling me and I'm like, look, I, I'm working this out with town right now. I can't give you many answers. They wanted to have five hours because they got a little gung ho and they're like, well, everybody wants to play. This is a very popular person who passed away in Netherlands. And Netherlands is full of musicians and everyone wanted to play. And I said, look, I, I'm just not going to do it. We're not going to do five hours. You could do four hours. So you know, the desire is there, but once again, I'm really, I mean, I'm thinking on my feet here. I'm loving the TRC concept. Because if you guys are already having TRCs, I was unaware of that. And we could just slide into those agendas. Heck, let's go ahead and flag a TRC for anything out of the norm. You know, I, I, I think you all ought to at least put that in your proposal that you're going to vote upon. And then we'll dial that in at the BOT level and I need to think about it for a couple of days, but I, I don't see any problem with anything needing a TRC that goes beyond what we've discussed.
So we could, we could say we're going to put special events have to go through the TRC. Is that what you're saying?
I would be amenable to that. Yes.
Okay. But let's put that in and then we'll see what the board says. And then you have time to think about it, Peter.
Yeah, it's a great solution. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay.
And I think, what, you know, what I, what I like about that is kind of my, this is my last point was I think Chris, Chris and Stephanie really touched on the fact that, you know, you know, if, if this gets voted on, you know, forward, it, it's it's important to still remember that, you know, I mean, it you know, making this a win-win is, is, you know, obviously the best way to go if possible, even for those in opposition, if, if some of their concerns can be addressed and that's, that's awesome. And I think just TRC is possibly the tool to kind of just keep that, keep that, well, to have some kind of tool in place to kind of check things along the way.
So Steve, this is Karen. I, I'm thinking that the three different conditions that I had talked about would be sufficient to cover any sort of special event. I'm concerned that special event is I, you're talking about a wedding as being a special event. I think the wedding, the parameters around a wedding event are the number of people, the timeframe and the noise variance. And so I don't think we need another category for a special event.
So what you're, what you're saying is that if for some reason the special event doesn't align with the, the SRU, then he goes to the TRC?
If for some reason the special event bumps him over six noise variances for the year or is greater than 150 people or is outside of the timeframe, which I don't know what we decide on five to 10, I think was kind of what we're leaning towards. Then he would take it to a TRC.
Okay.
So I don't think we need another category.
Yeah, that, that probably simplifies things somewhat.
Yeah. Yeah. I think, I think the saying special event is not a very well-defined term.
Chair Williams, this is Town Administrator Garrity. I just wanted to just voice a little concern I'm having, which is it sounds like you all are deliberating, but you haven't closed the public hearing. And the public hearing portion of it is when you're asking questions and taking testimony. And you're kind of doing both. And I just wanted to mention it that you might want to, I, I don't know if you've asked all of your commissioners if they have any more questions for, for Peter. And then if you want to get to a point that you want to close the hearing and then you can start deliberating. I just wanted to mention that.
Well, thank you, Karen. Now, the issue of course is as we come up with conditions, it's, it's helpful to get feedback from the applicant.
Oh, I agree. So, so this is still the public hearing then, and you're not actually deliberating?
Well, I closed the, the public hearing, but, but we're still talking with the applicant. Is that, is that your concern?
Okay. I heard you say you closed the public comment.
Public comment. Yes, I did.
Okay. But your, your public hearing is still going on.
Yeah, that's correct.
Where you're still taking testimony. Okay.
That's correct. Yep. Okay. Anything else, Billy?
No, no, that was everything.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris.
I agree with everything that has been said already. I think the TRC idea is a really good one. I think getting a little check and balance on the outside characters during a show is a good thing. I believe that also it can be worked out. I still, my biggest issue is the neighbors and noise going until 10 o'clock. If it can be a soft thing, if you're doing an early show and you're going to do a later show, you probably want to have two hours in between for teardown and setup. So I think if you went from five to eight, then it would be easier on the neighbors. And then if you're having a late show, then that starts at 10 and goes until one or two, or goes till two as, as far time is. And I think due to And I think due to the amount of people that are being backdated and stuff like that, I think opening a room and having not maybe 500 people in there, maybe you have 250 or 300 people in there. So there can be a little bit of social distancing would work, having the venue open. But I think the thing of having structure for special events, things like that, everything could be put in place so that all parties can be amenable to them.
So, so Chris, what exactly are you suggesting that we change the hours or?
The biggest question that's been, was brought to me in everything that I read was the hours. And I've always, when I was working with Peter, was only thing of having earlier shows. So you can't have families there and things like that. That is all a good thing. But a lot of times when you have families, kids conk out about eight or nine o'clock. So what you wanna have happen is that it becomes a safety standpoint and if family's leaving with their kids and everything, that they're not able to talk to their kids if the noise is too loud. And the other aspect would be is that just that the neighbors would know, alright, this noise is stopping at a set time. So there's two parts to that.
Okay. All right. Well, after we get this list together and then we close the public hearing, then we can go to hash out things like times and stuff like that. Does that sound reasonable?
Right. Yeah, that's reasonable.
Okay, anything else, Chris?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Stephanie?
I have two follow-ups on that. I think that in terms of the times, the one thing I'll say is that in the vast majority of letters that we're showing, not one point about vast majority, but in a number of the letters that we're showing support, part of the argument was from the neighbors and the community was this music isn't happening at a very late time. And so I do think that, given that we saw that was one of the things where people felt like, no, this is reasonable. It ends at, you know, sunset or nine o'clock. It's not a big late night disturbance to our community. I think I would want to, you know, I think that having something every single week, every single weekend that's going till 10 PM is a different, is a very different conversation than the history that we're supposed to be based, in part that we're basing this conversation up and basing our assessment on. And so since historically, you know, what Caribou Room has been doing is ending their, not having concerts go till 10. And that's part of what we're considering here is that history. I think we, I would, I would support something in the SRU that is consistent with the history and what has, the public has come to support. I think to do something different would be a pretty big change from what the public has seen to date in terms of the impact of the sound levels. So that's one. In terms of special events, the only comment I would say is that I do think that there should be some kind of, and Peter, I don't think this is clearly in your business, in your business model, you haven't said anything about it. But I do wanna just caution against creating a special events venue. We actually did have something like that considered before the Planning Commission a little while back at Caribou Ridge. And this group decided, declined to allow a special event that was focused entirely on things like weddings or private parties. Then again, part of the community support for this is as a community venue. And again, Peter, I'm not saying that you've implied that you would go in that direction for the majority of your business. But I do think that within the SRU, there should be some type of limit or cap on special events. So at some point, we're not opening the door to a special events venue. Because I feel like the Planning Commission has dealt with that in this neighborhood in the past and heard community opposition such a type of a venue. Thanks, Steve.
Okay, thank you. Did we lose Peter?
No, I'm here. I just have my hand up in case I have a spot to slip in there.
Okay. Do you wanna speak to the special events in particular?
Yeah, that's why I do like the TRC option. And to be totally transparent and clear here, when Ned Fest fell through, they approached me to see if I would be willing to hold the festival on my land. At that point, I was still under the SRU, so the answer was absolutely no. But it was intriguing. And I thought to myself, huh, wouldn't that be great if we could do a little something outside where we had more than just one or two bands? And that's why I think the TRC or some type of approval process, and it would be so rare that I think that town would be able to make a decision per event. So I definitely am not interested in having an outdoor event. What's the word we're looking for here? An outdoor event business. And I would like to commit to the fact that, that we're not gonna ever be as busy as we are gonna be this summer outside. And it's important for everyone to hear because we booked with COVID in mind. And I really wanna get back indoors. So I, I hear, I hear the commissioner and I think that we ought to figure that out. I would like to be able to come to the town and propose an event. But it would be a big deal and the town would have the option to say no. And so it wouldn't be something that's written in as a right that I have. I'm happy to give up any right in that direction. And you guys come up with some way of me going through an approval process for anything beyond what we have been doing. I will say nine o'clock cutoff is tough when you get until July, because the sun doesn't even go down till 9:30. And if we have a storm roll through at five and I've got a $3,000 band and people have paid $40 to get in and the storm rolls through and we don't get anybody on stage till 6:30. And this is what happened last year when we went late, the one time we went late, was the band wanted to continue to play because they hadn't given their customers and my customers enough music. So my concern with a nine o'clock hard cutoff is that. And that if I don't get, if I can't get a band on stage until six because of weather, you know, we'll just have to hash that out. I think at the BOT level, I think you should go ahead and make that recommendation. And then I'll hash it out with them. I totally understand where that recommendation is coming from. I hear Chris, excuse me, Commissioner Paray, I hear what he's saying as well. I feel like, I think we can work with it, but you know, my concern is also teardown, as Chris brought up. Teardown makes a little bit of sound. I've got people out there tearing down the PA and all that stuff. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna say there won't be any activity at all outside, but we would stop the show at a certain time.
Okay. All right, well, let's, I guess in the, I was gonna suggest in the interest of the neighbors and some of the comments that in the draft, we put in 9 PM and you can hash that out with the BOT for the final. And as far as special events go, I still like the idea of having special events go to the TRC. Now, the question though is, do we have to define what a special event is beyond what your normal events are?
Are you asking me or are you asking the chairman who made the proposal?
Actually, I'm asking the commission, but you could chime in first.
I'm sorry. What exactly is the question, Chairman? I'm sorry.
The question was, if we put special events have to go before the TRC for approval, what in your estimation is a special event? And do we have to define those as part of the SRU? That might be a question more for.
Well, Commissioner Blakemore had spelled out the three parameters I thought worked out well for what would trigger a TRC. I thought those were good, those three items that she listed.
Right, but then Commissioner Herring was having some concern about just doing special events all the time. So I'm just wondering if, if we should go to the TRC for special events.
I think absolutely.
And I'm throwing it back out primarily to the commissioners.
So Steve, this is Karen. I, what I'm hearing from Peter is that he has no intent to make the Caribou Room a special event center where he would have weddings every weekend.
An outdoor special event center.
Making his money off of special events and not music and concerts. So I, I, I would think that if the event fits within those parameters that we have, which is, you know, the number of noise variances per year, the timeframe, the number of people, that personally, I think the commission and the town wouldn't care what he's doing within that timeframe, as long as it's legal. And, you know, it's conforming to all the town ordinances. So, so I don't think we need to call out special event. Personally, I can't think of an event where, if it was within the parameters, the conditions that we have, will have in SRU, that he would need to go and have a technical review on it.
Stephanie, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm not sure yet. So I'm just recalling in our conversation, how many years ago, guys ago, Steve, when we, the Caribou Ridge proposed their wedding center. And we had numerous people from the community come out to that and say that that was not something that they wanted. Sort of this private event center was something that they did not want. And I don't know, I mean, it's been a couple of years, but I am thoughtful about that history. And so what I think that the community here is supporting is they are supporting a venue which is open and accessible to the public and their families, et cetera, like we've been talking about for most of the evening. And I agree, Karen, I have not heard Peter say this is in his current business plan, but things change. And so I just wanna make sure that we aren't opening the door to a, you know, private event center like the one that we have discussed in the past at this Planning Commission and have voted down. And I don't think that's what the community has stood up in all these letters to support. So, and I think that the thing is, Karen, you could still have a lot of very private events that are, that fall within the criteria that you've laid out. And so that's, I would still have some concerns that we don't wanna, we don't wanna open the door to that being that this is the primary use of this location.
However, the property is in the general commercial zoning district. And as long as it conforms to the uses that are a use by right, there shouldn't be any issue with what sort of event is held there.
Well, yes, no, because we're the community, what we're trying to do here is we're having this conversation around, and I think Peter opened the meeting very well and having a conversation around what's the direction we want our community in our town to go in. And so the, granting an SRU, these types of things outdoors for purely, you know, privately booked events is not what we receive letters of support for. And I don't think it's true to the intent of those letters to approve a business that is entirely designed around catering to privately booked events.
Yeah, I guess I, yeah, I guess I heard at our last Planning Commission meeting that, from Kimba, that the Caribou Room was also looking at using the outdoor space for private parties, weddings or other events. Memorial services, not for the entire event, but for part of it. So I, yeah, I guess it's something to discuss. I mean, the current, the SRU agreement before we talked about the modifications, the use was a music venue in the parking lot with eating and drinking in the outdoor space. And we're, we're considering changing that to specify the particular uses, although we didn't talk about, we weren't, we didn't give specificity to the types of events. And so we only talked about there would be music, eating, drinking, outdoor sales. And their outdoor vendors and maybe a couple other. So, yeah, I guess we should discuss that more.
Okay. So it sounds like the, the thing to decide is that if we go beyond the scope of the current SRU, one option is that any special events then, or don't fit into the SRU, then go to the TRC for approval. The other option is to expand the SRU to include special events and then therefore they fall under the, you know, the three categories we talked about. Is that correct? Those are our two options or best options?
Well, I, I, I would be concerned about the TRC having the criteria to grant permission for special events. What criteria will they use? You know, they're like, well, you could have four weddings a year or, so I, I think if we want to restrict the uses, it should be in the SRU agreement.
I'll tell you, I'm sorry, can I speak?
Yes, please go ahead.
I'm gonna have a hard time signing away any of my use by rights. So just keep that in mind.
And Peter, what are those?
I think that would be up to your counsel to tell you what my general commercial use by rights are.
Okay, comments from the, any other Planning Commission member?
Maybe I need clarity on that then. I thought that the use by right content was for inside the building, right? And we're talking about, Miranda, can you clarify? I thought we're talking about specifically what was happening in the outdoor area, but what was internally right, that is used by right.
I have used by right on the outdoor land as well.
I think I'll be looking for Jennifer to weigh in, but where would identify use by right, that's gonna be for the site itself, which would be the full property.
And I think that we're just parsing words here a little bit. I mean, what does a special event really mean? So that's hard to say what a special event really means. I mean, you know, a music concert could be a special event. So when we look at defining what the uses are under this SRU agreement, you know, one of the things that was discussed is outdoor ticket sales, food, drink, vendors, music, merchandise. Those were the categories. If the activity falls within those categories, then that would be permitted if the Board of Trustees approves this SRU agreement.
So Jennifer, you're saying that maybe not get specific for special events?
You know, you can. That's up to you. That's something for you to decide. But the question is, what does a special event really mean and what are you trying to avoid? What are the? What is the goal?
As Stephanie pointed out, what we're trying to avoid is it turning into a special event center as opposed to a music venue that, you know, you know, was the intent of the SRU, at least the draft SRU.
And and wanted to clarify specifically related to um, you know, renting out that out that outdoor space for things like um, you know, music and having conversations around being willing to grant you know, variances for additional sound, etc., that the community is much more amenable to those things if they think of it as a community venue versus the the level of community support if this is simply for um private events. In which case, I think we would probably be far more strict and say, you know, either the either the town sound levels, I must stay within these things, these are the, you know, etc., etc. I think we're we're trying to to work here towards something that's not that, because we see essential value to the broader community. And again, I'm only bringing this up because we had this kind of conversation around a proposal that did come before the planning commission several years ago. And it was clear that the community support for that was not as high. And so I think the Peter's proposal, at least what he has here, um, what we've seen so far is something that we have seen a lot of community support for. I just want to make sure that what we actually approve is and when we when we make accommodations to you know, allow some of these things outdoors in the SRU, that we're doing so under the understanding that we're doing it because this is a that when we grant this SRU, if you know, if we were to consider granting this SRU, that it would be for the purposes of a community type of place.
I, well, just a couple of quick points to speak to that. I appreciate the opportunity. One thing is that we do advertise ourselves as an event center. Um, that's what we are and and I'm not sure, I don't know any of the specifics of of the precedent you're speaking about. But um, were they also on general commercial land?
Yeah, that was one of the differences, right?
It was a residential Caribou Ridge property. It was a residential beauty.
So my guess is that a lot of the people who came out to speak against that was because of it was in residential. We we do advertise ourselves as a as a an event center. Um, not really a music venue as much as an event center. We want people to be able to do use the facility. So um, I'm not sure I have, I'm making any point here. I'm just um, I don't, I would like to argue that the precedent was not, I don't think it was a precedent because it wasn't on general commercial.
Understood. And for general commercial, you certainly have, you know, use by right, but we're still discussing um the proposal in an SRU, correct? And so I think that the amount that the town and the community um are willing to grant in the SRU is directly related from what I've seen in all those letters to how people view the use of this um venue.
And that was the problem with those letters, unfortunately, because they weren't solicited by us. We did try to get specific with the language, um, and there's going to be a lot more letters at the BOT level. And I'm happy to ha- direct our support group, so to speak, to speak more about events if you'd like. Um, but we are approaching a a point where I might not be interested in signing because I need to be able to make money with my land. So um yeah, you know, I I hear your point and I think it's a really important point to make. So I'm not sure how I feel about it. I don't think there's going to be an issue, but we are trying to cover all our bases here in this uh preliminary stages of this SRU. So I'm not sure how you guys want to carry forward, but I I don't think there'd be an issue, but I definitely don't want to put any restrictions on myself. I know I keep saying myself on the Caribou Room.
Stephanie, I I think we can, I I I think Karen's proposal of if it exceeds any of those um categories, then it goes to the TRC, then I I think we kind of have a check and balance there.
I I'd like to say, can I say something, Steve? Okay, so um I hear what you're saying, Stephanie. I I get it. Um, and perhaps what we can say is that um the noise, I think the issue base is the noise is the sound level for the neighborhood. Um, and perhaps what we can say is that any um private events will not exceed the seventy-two um decibel. And what does Peter think about that?
So this is an important point, and I'm I'm glad we're touching touching on it because I would have the event take out the variance and it would not count towards my six for my music series. If six is, I mean, it's a hypothetical at this point, but um if I had, and you know, the the people who are doing this uh this memorial service in in June, I told them they need to go get the variance. Um, and so I wouldn't want a private event to start eating into my allotted summer music series that I'm offering the town.
So what what Peter is suggesting, I think, is then a special event such as that then goes to the TRC. Is that correct?
Yes, in my opinion, yes.
Well, well, what he said was that um private events that require a noise variance would have to apply for the noise variance. The Caribou Room would not apply for them.
That's correct. And and so what what I'm saying is though, that if it falls on out of the the three categories, then it goes to the TRC, but Peter doesn't bring it to the TRC. The um, the the people who are renting the facility, if you will, do that.
Promoter, yeah, the promoter or the organizer or whoever the client is. The client needs to accept some of the responsibilities here.
Do all noise variants requests go to the TRC?
All noise variances are discussed at the TRC, but they're approved at the town clerk level. But when we have a TRC meeting, we have a spreadsheet that lists every special event that's coming up, even if it's just a noise variance that was polled. Now, I will say, though, that there are times in which a noise variance is applied for prior to a TRC meeting, which I guess takes it back to that clerk component, whereas ultimately the clerk who would issue that.
Yanks, you know, I guess I I do, um, as I'm reading the the uh aim here, especially the application here. Um, and I wondered about that with the Caribou Ridge thing is how, you know, what was the zoning there? And it sounds like it's residential, so it's different. And you know, the 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 quote, you know, in the summary from the application, um second paragraph, the zoning for general commercial and it quotes, you know, outdoor sales, eating and drinking, or other outdoor commercial activities or establishments. So um i- and it definitely seems like the more targeted, um, you know, we got to consider all the public feedback we got, but the more targeted, you know, it feedback we got from Caribou Room folks specifically was using that word commerce a lot, you know. So I I think when we look at the general commercial zoning and and that we're wording about outdoor sales, eating and drinking, other outdoor commercial activities or establishments, it does kind of um make me wonder whether we can um you know, it's it's reasonable to try to try to define uh special events, you know, because it's kind of already in there for the zoning. But it's not, it's just that it says other outdoor commercial activities.
Okay. So so you're saying that um, what what's your view of the um, if it exceeds the um the three categories we talked about, Billy?
The three category, three categories being um, the six, the six uh I'm remembering these. Hundred fifty people and then five till yet to be established. Um, I mean, I I think I'm pretty comfortable and I'm hearing the points. It's like we got this wave of letter, I mean, people for it definitely, you know, I I'm one of those parents too, like we're leaving by eight, usually before the music's gone. Um, and so part of what's great about it for a lot of people was just that community, you know, what it gives to the community and and ending early. Um, and I'm kind of losing my freaking train of thought here, but um I I I think those are, you know, I think, I mean, I mean, I think maybe for sake of keeping it simple, yes, if it goes beyond those things and maybe some of those numbers are defined tuned, then it would go to this TR C. Thank you. And and then um um, i- it's interesting to know that these other promoters and stuff would have to do their own thing w- w- was with regarding, you know, like noise variances, etc. I didn't, I didn't realize that that was probably that that that's how that works, but um, this does seem this is slightly different than the the Caribou Ranch situation.
I will say, just pardon me to interject, um, Chairman, if you don't, if you don't mind. Um, there is no set way on how this is going to work when it comes to who takes out the noise variance. I just wouldn't want to have my noise variances that I'm allowed to have. And I, you know, to be honest, we're dialing into a minutia that I don't think is going to be an issue at all. But I think it's, you know, of course, everybody wants to make sure all the bases are covered. I just wouldn't want, you know, I'm going to require anybody who, any private party that that they, if they are renting the space from me, that indoors and and or outdoors, that they get permission from town to do what they're doing. I think that's important. And the clerk is very qualified to make that determination as he or she essentially is representing the town government. Um, so I I mean, I don't anticipate this ever being a po- an issue, but I think we do need to at least identify the fact that if I have a private party who rents out the room, that they don't interfere or even um, yeah, I I see a problem, though. I see a problem on your side of the table with this and that you know, if a private party has nothing to lose by breaking their TR, uh, their uh, their variance, that they don't care. And so I I do see a problem on your side of the table there. So um, I'm, I think we should think about that. That that is interesting. I'm not sure what the answer is for either parties here.
That seems like that'd be more tying your contract with them about that. Yeah, you're right. I mean, for us, we're trying to just deal with the property.
So so I think that I want them to be liable for that ticket, that thousand dollar ticket. And not myself, right? And so I think that the the repercussions for them would be the ticket for them breaking the town code. And that they get the ticket and I'll have, you know, the ticket can be issued to me, but I'll have them in contract that they have to pay any fine they would ever receive from town. The only issue then is that I might want to slap a fine on them additionally because it hurts my relationship with town and I don't want to risk that. So um, you know,
That into your contract.
You bet. I have the incentive to not have them agitate my neighborhood. So I can add to that contract that they sign, that they assume all liabilities as well as all jeopardy when it comes to um town law. In fact, I'm I'm imagining the contract already, you know, it's pretty easy.
I I kind of like that solution, actually.
Yeah, you can hold me liable for the uh the breaking the town code or the TRC or whatever we have to do for whatever the event is. And then I can hold the client, um, the party, the private party. Um, I can make them responsible for whatever punitive damages that I I received. And i- it's in my best interest to keep them well behaved, right? So um, I I um, I think this is going to be a non-issue, but I we sure, we might as well spell it all out.
Okay, uh, how does the rest of the commissioners feel about this?
Sounds good to me. There has to be owners on both sides. This is Chris.
Okay.
Yeah, Stephanie, um, I, you know, the solution, Chris, of, you know, putting responsibility on the the client seems to make sense from your end. I think that it's still you know, this is this is an interesting point about how many times, I mean, so fifteen noise variances were polled last year. There just aren't that many, you know, nice weekend nights in Netherlands. So that kind of um, so that pretty much means, you know, most, most evenings or certainly most weekends, um, that there's some allowance to go over our town ordinance noise limits. Um, and so the idea that the a private event could potentially pull a variance as well and go over that. I guess maybe I should ask town, when these variances are issued, how far above town, towns ordinance that are they allowed to go? Is this sort of a, I mean, there must be still be a ceiling. It's just a higher ceiling?
Yeah, they can go to a hundred and five.
From seventy-two to a hundred and five?
Yeah, under a noise variance.
It's pretty standard. I'm sorry to interject, but it's a pretty standard noise ordinance. Um, one oh five, I think it's also, if you dive into that variance, you'll see, I mean, the ordinance, you'll see that it's at the mixed position, which means right in the center of where the speakers are pointed. We've never gone to one oh five ever in this town. I would never let an event event go to one oh five because that does hearing damage over time.
Okay, um well, what I'd like to do is to um, unless you see any other issues, commissioners, I'd like to go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll do just a little bit more discussion and then take a vote.
Sounds good.
Steve, can you clarify? Are we voting on whether to approve or reject and if approved, which with which amendments?
That that's correct.
Depends on the motion, right? Whoever makes the motions will establish that.
Okay, um, I'm gonna uh close the public hearing and uh let's um, let's talk about the motion. Um, would someone like to make a draft motion here and then we can uh discuss before we vote? Karen, could you um, I I kind of like your uh initial list there. You want to try to make that uh motion?
I guess I'm still confused about the private events versus the public ones. So maybe some, I I could, I think someone else should make the motion.
Stephanie?
Well, um, Stephanie, I mean, I have an idea how to make it unless Stephanie, you have something real specific. I I was
No, go for it, Billy.
Okay, so I make a motion that we um approve the SRU application. With with um the three um terms of um, yeah, as we're writing now, si- six noise variances annually, hundred fifty people and um a five to um nine thirty, I think, um to- timeframe for for, you know, sound levels. Um and and anything outside those, it would go to the TRC.
And we also changed the the use. And um, I think Jennifer has the that wording.
Yeah, the, um, the categories of, um, food.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes. Um, Jennifer, could you help me out with that? I don't have it memorized.
Yeah, so that is outdoor ticket sales, food, drink, vendors, music, merchandise. And there was also some discussion about parking.
So which would include outdoor, outdoor, um, ticket sales, food, drink, um, vendors, um.
Music.
Music.
Music and, um, merchandise, merchandise? And then, um, and parking, let's just say parking.
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, um, I guess one other question then would be, and this is a question for town. If in the event that, you know, we go through this summer and there are additional concerns or complaints raised by, um, by residents, is there a, you know, this is, this is an SRU. So is this an SRU from now until the end of time? Or people like to put at least a review period in there somewhere? Um, not necessarily an expiration date, but, but a point where this can come back to the planning commission and to see if there is an additional public feedback on how this is played out.
So I, I think really we have a motion right now. Do we have a, is there a second, I think is what the procedural next step would be? And then Stephanie, if you want to make a friendly amendment, you could do that.
Okay, I wasn't sure if I can make a moment now or should I make a minute later?
I will. I'll second.
Okay. Was that Karen?
Yeah, I'll second. Can I, can I, um, make a comment about noise variances at this time?
I believe you can.
Okay, so, um, I think the main issue that, um, the neighbors have is the sound level. And so we've set, um, a maximum of six variances per year for the Caribou Room. And, uh, every time a noise variance is requested, there's criteria to meet for that noise variance. And, um, one is that, um, there hasn't, it minimizes the adverse effects upon the community or the surrounding neighborhood. If, uh, they, they look at the applicant's history of noise permits and has any resident complaints been generated by those events? And so I think we have a, um, kind of a, uh, a check on, on this process so that if there are a, a lot of, um, events with a, a very high sound level, that they may not get the noise variance permit when it's requested. So, um, so in that sense, I, I feel a little bit better about the, um, private events, um, that are held, um, outside. Because I feel like we have a check and balance there.
Yeah, I think that's, uh, I think Stephanie, that goes to your question about how, how this thing is policed. In other words, if there's going to be, if there'll be a lot of complaints, then they don't get the, uh, the, the noise variance. Does that make sense?
It does. Yeah, I. Yeah, that's fine.
Can I add something here? If you, um, so there's, there's a few people who don't want me to do this process at all. They don't want me to be able to do shows outside.
Peter, we, we already closed the public hearing. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Yeah, no problem. I'll get it.
Actually, I thought you were Billy. Sorry.
Oh, no problem. I understand.
Yeah. Okay, um, all right, we're ready for a vote. We have a motion and a second.
Chair, Chair Williams, I'm sorry, before the vote, could you just repeat back the motion? So it's clear as to what everybody is voting on?
Okay. Well, okay, I thought we already did that when, when, um, Billy made his, um, motion.
There was just a lot of discussion in between. And I think it would be helpful for the record to repeat the motion.
Okay, I believe the motion was to approve the special review use application related to outdoor sales, eating and drinking at the Caribou Room, fifty-five Indian Peaks Drive, um, with the following conditions. To, uh, capacity is limited to a hundred and fifty. Noise variances are limited to six per year. Uh, hours of outdoor, um, yeah, hour restrictions for outdoor events are from five to nine thirty. The SRU would, um, would be, would include, um, outdoor sales, music, uh, vendors, uh, eating and drinking. And I just want to make sure that my list is complete. Anyone can add to that, please?
Merchandise and parking.
Merchandise and parking. Thank you.
And music.
Yeah, I think I said music.
He said music.
And then, then also just to be clear that if any of, um, for those three terms, that those would go, could go to the TRC.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, that's correct. So if, if there's any, um, exceedance of those, then it goes to the TRC for approval. Okay, um. Cynthia, could you take the vote, please?
Sure. Chair Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Commissioner Giblin?
Yes.
Commissioner Herring?
Yes.
Commissioner Prey?
No, because of the time limit.
Okay.
Um, for that, sorry, I know we're in the middle of a vote, but there was an opportunity to offer amendments. Would Chris like to offer an amendment at nine? And then have a vote? Or I would offer an amendment at nine?
If it's for me to accept, um, as, as the person you put out there, I would accept that.
So, so what you're going to have to do is, um.
Say it again, say it again.
Well, somebody who, let me look at the, you're going to have to do a motion to reconsider. So because you already took the vote and it passed, then you're going to have to do a motion to reconsider. So an amendment should have been made.
I'm, I'm sorry, what was the, what's the proposed amendment? I'm confused. I thought we covered that.
The proposed amendment is to modify the end time from nine thirty to nine.
Nine thirty to nine?
Um, yeah, so fi- five to nine instead of five to nine thirty.
I thought you said nine thirty.
I, I did. And so, um, um, as Chris had voted, no, because of the time. And then Stephanie brought up a good point that we really hadn't, um, got totally cleared the, you know, the friendly amendment. And so, um, Jennifer is, is telling us a way that we can do that at this point since the vote was taken.
So one of the, um, commissioners who voted on the prevailing side of the motion needs to make a motion to reconsider.
Okay, motion to reconsider. This is Stephanie.
And so you'd want to make your motion to reconsider the approval of the SRU application to add an amendment, whatever your amendment is.
Okay, um, make a motion to reconsider the SRU application to add an amendment to change the timeframe of operations from five to nine. Anything outside that would require the town technical review.
Okay, so do we, um, do we get a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, who, um?
It's Chris.
Chris? Okay, Chris. Did you get that Cynthia?
I'm sorry.
Did, did you get that second?
I got, uh, Commissioner Herring and, uh, and Commissioner Giblin, uh, seconded.
Okay. Okay, let's, um, and then we take a vote.
Okey doke. Chair Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Commissioner Giblin?
Yes.
Commissioner Herring?
Yes.
Commissioner Prey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody. We took a lot of time, but I think it, um, was worth hashing out some of these issues to help Peter. Thank you, Peter, for all of your help and input and willingness to, um, you know, to, to work with us. And of course, you, you've seen both sides, so you understand that. But thank you very much.
I really appreciate everybody on this one. And, uh, I know it was a tough one. And you guys have a lot of stamina. And I really appreciate you very much. And I, I think, I think we've reached a really, uh, a great proposal. And hopefully the BOT will agree with us. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Yes. Talk about stamina. We're not done yet, but you are.
I know. Good luck, guys.
Thank you. I would like to, uh, take a, um, uh, about a five-minute break. And then we'll reconvene and go over the rest of the agenda.
Thank you.
Everybody in favor?
Stephanie.
Yes.
Okay, so let's, uh, we'll convene here at, um, well, how about at, um, ten, ten fifteen? How's that sound?
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The process.
I mean, you know what?
The crazy. Miranda, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Um, did you, uh, text, uh, Jim or, uh, Roger?
Yep, I texted Jim. He's on and Roger has not responded. And then Roger was kind of that unknown, so.
I, I sort of got the, the feeling that Roger was not going to join, but I didn't know that for certain.
Yeah, he didn't, he didn't know either. He said to text him and if he was available, he'd jump on. But because I haven't heard from him, I'm thinking we'll continue on without him.
Okay, I think that's, um, I think that's a smart thing to do. Okay.
I'm here, Steve.
Uh, oh, hey, Jim. Sorry to keep you waiting.
Hey, no problem. Sounds like it must have been a, or it seemed like it must have been quite a lively discussion.
It, it was, uh, very productive though, so that, that's good.
Good.
Okay. Let's see, we've got a few more minutes here as people wander back here. So Miranda?
Yes?
Um, so the, um, the two, um, ordinances, are they going to be introduced by Jennifer? Is that correct?
Uh, Jennifer is going to introduce this ordinance regarding chapter seventeen. And I'm going to do the one for marijuana zoning.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I saw your email just really late and I just read it quickly. I just wanted to make sure I had that right.
It was going to be Jennifer, but because of that public comment that came through about the marijuana zoning, I wanted you to be able to speak to that because we met with that, that person. Um, so I'd like to add. that, that person. So I'd like to add some of that comment.
Oh, okay, good. Okay, let's see. We've got about another minute or so, but let's see if everyone is back.
I'm, it's Billy. I'm back.
Billy's back. How about Karen Blakemore?
Rose is back.
This is Stephanie. This is Stephanie. Steve, I'm here.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I think we're just waiting, as I think we're just waiting on Karen. Karen Garrity back?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. You're, you're always there.
I'm always here.
There. Okay. Blakemore? Come on, Karen. She was on the committee, so she really needs to be back before we start. All right, Karen Blakemore. Okay, well, I think we need to get started. It's getting late. Okay, Jennifer, are you there?
I am.
Okay, would you be so kind as to introduce this action item?
Yes, definitely. So what you have before you is draft ordinance number eight twenty. And this draft ordinance is a repeal and replacement of the subdivision regulations that are in chapter seventeen. And this draft ordinance has been a work in product, excuse me, progress for some time. This matter originally came to the planning commission February of last year, and there was discussion with problems of the current subdivision regulations and lot line adjustments that are currently set forth in the code. The commission had discussed several of these concerns, confusing language, and approval for some of the processes for lot line adjustment and minor subdivision. So after that discussion, the planning commission provided support to review the town code. That was discussed also then with the Board of Trustees. And at the September twenty-third meeting of last year, the planning commission discussed a draft subdivision regulations. And a subdivision subcommittee was formed. That subdivision subcommittee consisted of Roger Cornell, Karen Blakemore, Karen Garrity, Miranda Fisher, Cynthia Baki, and myself. And that committee met over several months, put in a lot of hard work. And what you have before you is the draft ordinance eight twenty that is a rewrite of chapter seventeen. There are some new processes that are in this draft ordinance, such as plat amendments, plat vacation, lot line adjustment, and plat corrections. And it's just, it's all a clear process for all of these different subdivisions. So I'm going to stop there and perhaps Commissioner Blakemore would like to add to it since she was on the commission or on the subcommittee, and also make myself available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Karen, are you back yet?
I'm back, and
Okay.
I, I think what Jennifer presented there and what she has in the agenda item is pretty clearly lays out the process and what the, and the functionality of the new amendment and how it differs from the old one. So, and I, I believe in the, in her discussion there, she mentioned how a lot of the effort went into verifying that everything that's in our current code is included in the new ordinance. So I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, before I open this up for public comment, does any, any of the other commissioners have any questions for either Jennifer or Karen? Anybody? Okay, we'll come back to discussion here. I'm sorry, hello?
All looks okay.
Okay. All right, so I will open this up for public comment. Is there anyone on the call in the public that would like to speak to this action item? Same rules apply as we talked about for the, for the first action item. Anybody out there? Okay, having heard having heard no one that want wishes to speak, I will close the public comment portion and bring it back to the commissioners for further discussion. So let's, to expedite, let's just go around the horn here, and we'll start with Stephanie this time. You have any questions, comments?
No, I read through it, and it looked like, you know, I remember discussing this at some previous meetings and the confusion around this. So I thought that the new text was a lot clearer. And mostly just thanks to the team for putting it together. My one question is, is Roger joining us again? I wasn't sure if he, if we were going to hear from all the commissioners who worked on it.
He
Here tonight.
Okay. Anything else, Stephanie?
No, thank you.
Okay. Jim, Jim Reese?
I think that they did a great job of going through and identifying areas of confusing language. And I know that it's a very tedious work to go through and get that all correctly, you know, adopted and agree on it all. So thank you, team, for taking that on. And I think it's ready to go forward.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Billy?
Yeah, I, I agree. I haven't read through it, and kind of haven't gone through it the last time when we went through it and gave our final comments. And if you threw it again, I think you guys did a great job of making this more concise in many ways, more organized, and more fluid. And it looks pretty complete.
Okay, thank you. And Chris?
I have nothing to add. Everything was good. Thank you to the committee for doing the flush out. And all the legwork from town staff as well.
Excellent. Thank you. And I fully agree. I had a bunch of changes early on that I provided to Roger, and I see that those have been made. So I'm very, very pleased with how it turned out. And just like everyone else, thank you to the committee for your hard work, because I know how much went into that. So thank you very much. Okay, well, since there's no comments or discussion that I'm aware of, are we ready to take a vote? I would like to have a motion to send this on to the Board of Trustees?
This is Jim Reese. I make a motion that we adopt draft ordinance eight twenty.
Repealing and replacing the subdivision regulations in chapter seventeen of the Netherlands Municipal Code?
Yes, thank you. I was trying to find the rest of that.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second. Chris?
Chris, okay. Cynthia, could you take a vote, please?
Sure. Chair Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Commissioner Giblin?
Yes.
Commissioner Herring?
Yes.
Commissioner Preay?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the final action item. This would be draft ordinance eight one nine, zoning limitations for cultivation, product manufacturing, and testing facilities. This, I think Miranda will introduce this action item.
Yes. So the last time this came before you was in February. So let me just do a quick recap. So just as a reminder, there was, last year, an emergency ordinance that put a temporary moratorium on the acceptance of applications for retail medical marijuana. And during that time, a marijuana ordinance review committee was formed that was tasked with investigating, reviewing, and analyzing potential new regulations for marijuana-related businesses. And what came out of that was, in December, the Board of Trustees adopted ordinance eight thirteen, which limited the number of retail medical marijuana establishments to four locations. When that review committee met, there was a discussion about zoning for cultivation, product manufacturing, and testing. And they felt it was best for the planning commission to, to review those. So in December, the planning commission agreed to form a subcommittee that consisted of trustee Taylor, vice chair Reese, and commissioner Giblin, who, over the course of a few months, came up with the following recommendations. First, that marijuana cultivation, product manufacturing, and testing facilities would go through a special review use process for all zoning districts where those businesses are currently allowed, either for use by right or SRU. And so that, they would then allow the planning commission and the Board of Trustees to really review and consider those requests. The other was requiring five hundred feet between marijuana establishments. And so what it would, what the ordinance that before you does is it amends the use group tables. In addition, we also are recommending a removal of the forestry district classification. There are no properties in forestry districts, so we felt that, at the time in which we made a use group table update, that it made sense to make that removal. So before you tonight is that draft ordinance. One thing that's not in the aim, though, that I do want to draw attention to is this public comment from Agadi. And in looking at my notes, it does not appear that the marijuana committee that the planning commission developed discussed this. So we have a situation in which the use group table shows that medical marijuana infused product facility is used by right. But then we have marijuana product manufacturing facilities, which is the recreational side of that, as not permitted. There is a comment here from Agadi about how that seems to be somewhat inconsistent. And I think that, again, as stated, our committee didn't look at this line item per my notes. And so it's something I just want to bring into tonight's discussion about considering this. As town staff, there are no concerns if these were to align. And Agadi does speak to their own process or thought related to making that use by right versus SRU. And, David is on tonight to also give public comment. But I would ask that there maybe be a discussion, whether that be to amend the ordinance or potentially kick this back to that committee to assess this piece here that's in that public comment.
Okay, thank you, Miranda. How about Jim Reese, or you want to chime in here since you were on the committee, and also Billy?
Sure. This is Jim. So basically, what we saw is, as this was, when we, they were asked us to form this committee was to take a look at this, is this is a type of business that has, is a little more sensitive than typically open a bookstore or a coffee shop. And, you know, there was this, all these use by right categories available. And so we thought about, you know, the wrong time for, you know, the neighbors to be finding out about it is after it's built, and they're going down to town hall and want to know why they didn't know anything about it. This looked like a prime opportunity to amend this code and let us be able to review it as a planning commission and get public comment. It would be an opportunity for neighbors to weigh in. And we just felt that that was a more common sense way to go about looking at this type of business as opposed to a use by right, just, just on the, on the basic, you know, understanding that it's not just a coffee shop, or, you know, a knick-knack shop or something like that. It's something that, that could have some additional impact on neighbors beyond, you know, what a traditional business would be. In addition to that, we looked at distance between establishments, and we're going to recommend, you know, five hundred feet between those businesses to allow other businesses to have an opportunity. So we didn't end up with like a pot row where we had multiple businesses all taking up a whole block. And that also, I think Billy could probably talk to this a little bit, too, but we did some, the town staff, not we, I, we got to read the great work by the town staff and Jennifer, thank you very much, but did some, you know, comparisons about other towns in the area. And, you know, this is consistent, just like it says in the, in the ordinance, you know, with other towns of our size. And we just, after a lot of discussion on other methods to come up with that, we decided that that was, you know, the, the most fair and kind of by other towns, you know, from precedence, distance between them. So I'll stop, and I'll let Billy chime in.
Thanks, Jim. Yeah, I think the main priorities we had were just that. We wanted to not make it so that the town just became. Yeah, I mean, in that, we were looking at marijuana production and manufacturing. Specifically, we wanted to we're, we're, we're just so that the town just didn't become an all, or a certain part of the town just of the town just didn't become exclusively this particular kind of business. And we, you know, we also talked a lot about wanting to make that happen more globally. So like, not any one business would just kind of take over this whole part of town or any part of town, but we'd be able to just mix up the types of businesses that there are throughout the different zoning districts. And yeah, ultimately, we, you know, we looked at math and all these different ways of figuring out the distances, but we ended up deciding that a lot of other towns have gone through this process. And we looked at quite a few and ended up settling on five hundred feet, which seemed representative of similar types of towns. Well, yes, so those are, those are the main, those are the main, you know, bringing it and bringing these kind of licenses in front of playing commission and the board for an SRU is really just about more transparency and more ability of the residents to have some, you know, to know what's going into places and have some ability to comment on it as it's happening. And yeah, I do feel like this comment that came in from, let me go, I might say it wrong, apologize, is something we definitely didn't cover. Interesting to learn more about that.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Billy. I think I'll open it up for public comment at this point, then we'll bring it back to the planning commission. Anyone out there that wishes to speak on this action item?
Yes, Dave and Michael, I'm the general counsel for Agadi. And with the permission of the chairman, I would like the opportunity to speak.
Okay, please give your full name and address, please.
My name is David Michael. I live at one oh five Blue Sky Way in Winter Park, Colorado. And I have a business address in Netherlands on Jefferson Street. We run a retail marijuana store there. So may I begin?
Yes, please. I'm sorry.
Excellent. First of all, I would like to say that I am in support of ordinance eight nineteen, I think is well conceived and well crafted. There are two issues that I would like to expound upon. The first is that medical marijuana MIPS are permitted as a use by right within the CBD zone. I think this is appropriate. And the MIP use is not one that I think presents a lot of issues to the public. There is virtually no difference between the medical MIP and a recreational MIP. All of the same processes are in play, the same products are produced. The only difference between the two is that you can dose medical edibles higher with delta nine THC than you can with recreational edibles because they are limited to ten milligrams per serving. And I would like to request that there be an amendment, and I have sent in a meme, an email with exact language permitting the recreational MIP as a use by right within the CBD zone. As it is currently drafted, ordinance eight nineteen has suggested that in other zones, industrial and general commercial, that it be a special, a use by special right. I would agree with Commissioner Giblin and Commissioner Reese that it is appropriate to have transparency, and particularly with cultivation uses, especially going through a special review process makes a lot of sense because those are, can be very noxious in terms of smells and have a much higher public impact. But a MIP, on the other hand, is no different than a commercial kitchen like you would have in a restaurant and how you are conducting it in the, and you are basically creating edibles and concentrates from there. And I don't think the special review process is critical in this regard, particularly because if you are applying for a new license, you will have to go through the licensing process with the Board of Trustees, which will require a hearing before the Board of Trustees. And at that hearing, there will be opportunities for public comment, opportunities to impose conditions. And so neighboring property owners will not be left out of the decision making process. There will be transparency. And all you'll be creating is a duplicative process and more government bureaucracy rather than a streamlined, efficient process by which to make those decisions. Accordingly, I would request that you allow for, if I may just finish, the amendments as drafted to allow for recreational MIPS to be a use by right rather than a special review within the CBD zone, and that all other MIPS also be allowed in the other zones to be a use by right, as I think that that is appropriate and fair. And I would welcome questions. I have extensive experience. I've been attorney in the space since two thousand nine. Agadi operates twenty licenses with one hundred and seventy employees in multiple jurisdictions around the state. And if I can lend any guidance based on my experience, I'd be happy to do so to this commission. And thank you, everyone, for their work.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, David. Does anyone have any questions for David? Okay. If not, is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this action item?
I have a comment submitted by Kathleen Chupai that I'll read into the record.
Okay, thank you.
Kathleen Chupai, thirty-year resident of East Magnolia, seventeen-year business owner. Tonight I speak as the co-author of the initial unamended language in the Netherlands Municipal Code for A sixty-four recreational cannabis businesses passed in two thousand thirteen, language written as people's initiative that town adopted. I am in full support of the public comment to amend ordinance eight nineteen made by David Michael, General Counsel of Agadi. I have spent the last ten years trying to correct what seems to be an endless number of conflicts in the town code. And now you want to add more. The language proposed by the planning commission town is in one hundred and eighty-degree conflict with the like use by rights of medicinal cannabis businesses. Like Mr. Michael said, the use is literally the same, and it is and has been a use by right for almost a decade. Just listening to the planning commission and town attorney tonight on the Caribou Room SRU, it is clear that none of you understand that special events and special event permits are only required of someone, of someone's use of public land, not private land, and especially not private land zoned a use by right for commercial activity. As I typed this, we are currently three hours into part two of the Caribou Room SRU that, in my opinion, shouldn't be occurring because the Caribou Room has a use by right to commerce on their entire piece of land on general commercial. I also have a problem with the fact that subcommittee meetings on cannabis language were not publicly announced, nor was the public invited. I found out about the meetings after the fact. And the subcommittee was handpicked and only included current cannabis business owners who have concern for their current licenses, the referred madness rhetoric from the Boulder Health Department, and the people working with teen addiction who are anti-pot. No independent or pro-cannabis voices were included. That is why the language in eight nineteen is one hundred and eighty degrees from what is currently in the code and why it's come this far in such conflict with the current code language. After listening to the previous planning commission meetings where this subject was discussed, I am concerned that the planning commission and the attorney do not really understand the code. I say this because the planning commission questions and the discussions reveal it. My head almost explodes with what I hear. That's the end of the comment.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, if not, I will close the public comment section and bring it back to the planning commission for discussion. So maybe we'll start with Jim and Billy again. And basically, based on what you heard, what do you think that the ordinance should be modified? Should the subcommittee continue to work on this? Or do you feel that this is a, should go forward?
This is Jim Reese.
Go first.
Yeah, I, I think that it should go forward without the amended language. I actually, you know, I appreciate, you know, the comments from, you know, David Michael about this. And I read through his information. But it basically goes back to what I said before. I feel like any of these type of businesses are a little bit more special, you know, than your everyday coffee shop or bookstore. And I think that, you know, having, you know, the town staff having the process, you know, the work through the SRU process, and having neighbors get a chance, you know, as we've seen, not every time there's a public meeting about something does it get fully announced and everybody becomes aware of it. So while I know it'll have to go before the BOT for final approval, I think that having us look at this and having an opportunity for public comment is, is a good thing. I, you know, and I, you know, I question whether or not the extra, you know, sixty days or ninety days that that puts on to a, you know, a well-funded business like the one that Mr. Michael represents can absorb. And it's probably good for the community to have these opportunities to review it. That's the end of my comment.
Vice Chair Reese, I just wanted to bring up, I think one thing that maybe we didn't look into in a part of David's comment is we do indicate in here that, that for this marijuana product manufacturing, that it's actually a no and not a special review use. So I guess maybe the comment back is, is would you like to at least just change this column right here instead of an N to an R so that it aligns with kind of the need. But if you see, like, product manufacturing is a, is a yes here, and it's not a special review use. So I think that there maybe are some inconsistencies in this column that, that Mr. Michael is bringing up, and in one of which definitely being the kind of the no to the yes, that piece right there. And if you want to leave it that way, or if you feel like we need to revisit this?
So what you're showing, unfortunately, I'm seeing a big green block instead of the actual, I'm trying to find it currently on my other screen. But are you recommending that we make that change?
Well, I guess, you know, maybe a spot would be, yeah, either to, you could change this no to be a special review use, which I think was the desire of the committee was for, you know, this is where these underlined Rs, I think, in looking at my notes, I do feel like this may have been an oversight, and this would have maybe needed to have been changed to an R. It's either that or to move this back to the subcommittee just to make sure that we do in fact feel that these Rs and nos and Ys do in fact align, and that they make sense where you've got, you know, retail and medical, that if you want them both to be Rs, that they are in fact both special review uses and not ones a no and ones an R, which in the case here, that's what you have is Central Business District is saying no to retail product manufacturing, but yes, use by right to medical marijuana product manufacturing.
Yes, I see exactly what you're saying there. I think that was indeed an oversight, and that we intended for that to all be under special review and not use by right or no, not allowed. So yes, I would recommend that we make that, that one change. But I would not recommend that we go with use by right for the other businesses. And I'll let Billy or anybody else weigh in what they think on that.
Yeah, this is Billy. And I agree. I do think it was more of an oversight. I don't remember us ever even breaking those out and talking about separately in the CBD. And I don't, you know, even though medical marijuana tends to be legalized around the country often before, you know, generally before recreational, we definitely didn't have any kind of discussion that broke these out separately. So I'm going to agree with it being an oversight, you know, as a no. And I'm also going to agree for sake of consistency that, that the review process is, is, is really not even, you know, from my perspective, wasn't even totally focused. And really, everything we talked about was like, we don't really have a chip on their shoulder or anything against the marijuana industry at all. It was just more about having, having an ability to create diversity in business. And so the review use, the special review really just gives it a chance to, because we talked about that, you know, with the cost incurred by a special review or not having it. But I felt like most of these businesses really, you know, can absorb this. It's just kind of a cost of doing business. And also, it really gives the town and the residents a chance to know what's going on and chime in. So I agree with you.
Okay. Any other planning commission member, members wish to interject anything here?
This is Karen. I have some questions. So the, and if, I see the medical marijuana is infused product facility, whereas the non-medical is marijuana product manufacturing facility. But those are the same, they're both infused products. Is that right?
Well, I don't, I mainly, I don't have all the definitions of the different license types. And so I'm not sure if you're open to asking David if we, if playing would feel comfortable, since he is an expert in the field, to weigh in on that. I just, I don't have that in front of me to give that answer.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to hear David's answer.
Yes, I think we, we could ask David to weigh in, please.
With, thank you for the opportunity to speak. It's a very good question. So I think to best answer your question, let's look at the first, the state law. And under the state law, the two uses are identical in terms of whether it is actually not said as recreational, it's retail, which is a part of the constitutional amendment. But for, for our purpose, we'll call it recreational versus medical. They are identical uses. And the only difference at the state level is the dosage that you can put into the edible. On the other hand, I think it's critical to understand the town of Netherlands process, which I became very aware of as a member of the Marijuana Advisory Committee. The medical ordinance was passed, I think, around two thousand and ten, which was very early on during the state. And there was language used in that ordinance when the state did not have its designations. Then in around two thousand and fourteen, Netherlands passed its recreational ordinance and used different nomenclature, but it was an identical use and an identical license for both the local license and the state license. So even though the name has differences, and I found that strange when looking at the zoning ordinance, they are for all intents and purposes, the same license when applied for, for both the town of Netherlands and for the state. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, that does. And then for Billy and Jim, so I see that you change, change the use by right for recreational marijuana to special review. But I don't see the same changes for medical marijuana. And so I'm wondering why we're doing a special review for recreational but not medical?
Honestly, I feel like we did make those changes consistently. And I don't know why, in, you know, outside of the CBD, I don't know why that isn't showing the same in this draft.
I agree. I thought the intent, so let me be clear, the intent was for it to be universal SRU review of, of all of these categories anywhere where it was allowed. And in the condensed version that we had, we had all of those changed, I believe. And so I think maybe there was just some, yeah, just some clerical errors there.
Okay.
I agree.
And what is a medical marijuana optional premises for cultivation? Is that just a cultivation facility?
Wasn't that, isn't that the, I can't remember, isn't that the attached? Miranda, isn't that the attached cultivation?
Yeah, that would be. Yeah, that would be, it would be a cultivation center specifically for medical marijuana versus your marijuana cultivation facilities.
So it's analogous to the, um, recreational marijuana cultivation facility. Okay. Um, just two more things. I'm wondering why, um, we're requiring 500 feet between, uh, cultivation, manufacturing and testing facilities, but not between retail?
So this, this committee was only tasked with doing cultivation, product manufacturing and testing. Retail was handled by a committee formed, the board of trustees that formed. Um, so I would, I'm just not saying that it can't be brought back to this group to discuss, but it wasn't necessarily in their purview to begin with.
Okay.
Yeah, trustee, um, Taylor kept reeling us in back to the fact that we were only really, um, you know, assigned to deal with a real specific thing and to not go beyond that. And so we didn't talk about retail for that reason.
All right.
It seemed like the retail was already, you know, decided on by the BOT.
Okay. Um, and then there's one typo for Jennifer. It's on the first page, the second last, whereas, the word amendment should be amend.
Thank you. I see that.
Okay. So I, I would recommend that this goes back to the, um, committee because it looks like the table is, is not right.
Yeah.
And, um, and then to, uh, yeah, incorporate a consideration of, um, David Michael's recommendations.
So I'm gonna, as I look at this a little closer, I think part of the reason why there's the inconsistency, uh, this is Jim Reese, uh, is that we looked only at cultivation operations and I, as I'm looking at the retail marijuana store, uh, marijuana testing facility, uh, and these other ones, I believe that those did not fall in the category of what we were trying to amend. We specifically were looking at cultivation operations.
No, 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 we, we were looking at cultivation, production and manufacturing. We were looking at three, you know, we, I think we were looking at everything but retail.
Huh.
As I am, as I look at it, and then I, I totally remember that that was, it was a group of three, you know, sectors of, of the marijuana industry that would, that were part of this.
I guess, uh, this is not quite ready then yet. I, I would agree that this needs to go back and, uh,
Wrong phone. I'm like, what am I connected to? So I'm looking at the notes from our meeting and I actually do think that maybe to Jim's point, there was just an error in transferring the information. Um, cause let me, is it okay Chair Cornell if I share this document really quick?
You mean?
Chair Williams.
It's our, oh yeah, sorry, Chair Williams. Yeah. It's our document that we worked off of. So if you see where all the Rs are, that we did talk about these last two, and I think that maybe these, those Ys just never made it over. And this, uh, Commissioner Giblin, you are correct in that this was discussed and it appears that the table is not right. And so if for clarification purposes for the commission, it makes more sense to bring this back to just correct and mirror this document, um, we can absolutely do that or, or discuss that change now, whatever seems most appropriate. But these are our notes from our meeting.
Yes, that looks much more like what we were working with. Thank you.
I remember all the, the highlighting in the, in the red.
It, it, I'll, I'll tell you, this has been pushed off because of the size of our agendas, uh, for our PC meetings, about three months now. Uh, I would love to, if it's possible, to adopt these changes as, as what you're, you're showing here and, uh, get the correct ones transferred into the, into the ordinance, uh, but vote on it tonight if, if possible. If people are, uh, amenable to this, because it just seems like this is, uh, lagging, lagging behind here.
Hey Jim, just to clarify where it says our ask attorney, this is under the forestry where you said you were going to strike out all the the content on forestry because there is no building on the forestry. Is that, is that what the ask eternity attorney is there for?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's exactly why I said it's going to strike through. So there's no confusion. That's why that was there. And, and to your point, we are removing then four or three altogether. So that column is not relevant.
And my other question was under section one, um, it, I, I, I do think that if this is something that we're supposed to be releasing to the public, it is very confusing for us to hear the backstory about how you were only supposed to focus on things that didn't include retail marijuana. That makes sense to us, but this is going to go into a book where the public isn't going to have that context. And so, um, when I look at the next section, section above, sorry, um, one, the language in section D was a little confusing versus no marijuana testing facility shall be located except in zoning areas, neighborhood commercial as special review use, comma, central business, et cetera, GCI by special review approval. And so somehow neighborhood commercial looks like it's different than CBD, GC and I. Because, because neighborhood commercial is followed by as a special review use versus special review approval for the other ones. Is that intentional? Do you see where I'm looking, Miranda?
No.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It took me a minute there. Will you, will you say that I have the table now in front of me? Will you say that again?
Sure. I'm actually referring to the text language under section one, subsection D, where it says after, and subsection D, after neighborhood commercial, it says neighborhood commercial as a special review use, comma, and then it lists CBD, GC and industrial by special review approval. So I'm wondering why special, that, those, that language as a special review use follows neighborhood commercial zoning.
This is Jennifer Madsen. I think that that, um, that first as special review use should be stricken.
Okay, thanks. That, that's, that's what I was thinking. I just wanted to confirm. Um, yeah, that as long as that's going to be stricken, that's another edit that I had before we were to approve it. Um, I do think though, Jim and, and Billy, I wasn't on the group, so I'm a little, I, I hope I, I don't know if that point is clear though, that I'm, I am concerned that when we release this to the public, they'll be like, well, why is retail? How, how are we addressing retail marijuana? Because I would think that the recommendation, um, given what the board of trustees passed recently with the moratorium on new businesses, that at least putting it, is it, but yet in the code, it still says it's, yeah, so it's used by right. So if there shouldn't be some update in here, even if it's an asterisk saying as of December, or whatever the date was, the board of trustee has put a moratorium on all new retail marijuana, so something along those lines. Because otherwise this part of the code is going to be very confusing for the general public. At least I would, I would think so.
As Billy, I totally agree. I mean, I mean, you know, we were definitely, you know, kept specific on what we were working on, but, but I think making that clear, um, gives, gives everyone context when it moves to the BOT.
Yeah. I mean, honestly, I think that if you just put an R in there, people would have to go to the town and the town would just say, sorry, is there a moratorium or the moratorium has been lifted? And, you know, we could, I don't know if we would, I don't know what the right answer is, Miranda and town staff, but I do think it's very confusing to have yes in there as a used by right, given that there's a moratorium right now on new businesses.
So I guess to clarify, there is no moratorium. So that ordinance eight thirteen was adopted prior to the, the moratorium expiring in January. So that, so that is kind of the new limitation is the four locations under retail and medical. Uh, I see what you're saying is that kind of the use by right is confusing, but if someone came to apply, we would notify them that there were no available licenses. So while it may be used by right, um, there's kind of that caveat of there has to be an available location license.
Okay. My only thing is I don't know how the rest of the team feels about this, but I actually think that the marijuana stores and their medical marijuana centers should also be SRU just so that the town could have a moment to discuss where these facilities are being located, much like we do for other things. So I would like to see those Ys turn into Rs, um, but, uh, that's not the scope of this group. Then I wouldn't want to hold things up on that. Maybe that's a discussion for a future day.
Commissioner Williams, this is David Michael. May I make a point of clarification regarding that particular issue? Or is it inappropriate at this point as public comment has ended?
Well, it, it's, it's ended, but, um, we, we can open it up to, uh, allow you to speak to that issue.
Having sir, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Having served on the marijuana advisory committee, I am very familiar with the process that went through to put a cap in place. The cap for stores in particular is not a moratorium and many jurisdictions have these caps. And all it says is a limitation on the number that can be within the town's jurisdiction. The cap, um, it, it isn't, it is not like moratoriums where there will be no new, um, applications heard. It merely says that there will only be four licenses. Currently, there are four licenses for, for stores within the town, of which Agadi does have one. And, um, I think it is very clear to the public that if one of those licenses were to lapse or where the business was to go out of business, then at that point in time, a license would be available. However, there, and there is no moratorium on that new license that would become available. Right now, as there are currently four licenses within the town and the board of trustees pursuant to the recommendations of the marijuana advisory committee, place that cap in place so there can't be any more than four. And so I think that point was very clear, um, at the board of trustees level when the moratorium expired and the cap was then put in place thereafter. I hope that explains this. I do not think that that's a point of confusion amongst the industry. And I do not think that would be a point of confusion amongst the, uh, any applicants that would come into place. And the only time that there would be an applicant is would a license become available by a business going out of business? And there are being three licenses, three stores in place and a fourth now becoming available. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. I, I mean, I shouldn't have used the word right moratorium. I have the right word. Um, so right, the cap, um, the cap of four businesses. Still think that, you know, we should have a discussion around whether retail marijuana, um, should be used by right. You know, when we, I remember when we were talking about Nodded Root and their patio area, you know, we were able to have a robust discussion around having a facility like that located next to a childcare center at the time, right? And since things have changed in that circumstance, we've recently approved their patio. Um, but the inability to even have that conversation because it's used by right, I think is something that especially, um, you know, I think it's something that, you know, we should, we want to consider, be able to consider. To at least have the consideration or discussion around what, what's, you know, what else is, um, what else the town is using that space for and in the area and having, giving the public an opportunity to provide comment.
Commissioner Williams, can I make another point of clarification on that?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Currently under state law, you cannot have a marijuana dispensary within 1,000 feet of a childcare facility. And there are state laws that are current, there's a state law that currently opposes that. And if a new license was proposed at a new location, there would be an opportunity for notice and public comment at the board of trustees level regarding that license. I think that, um, Commissioner Reese and Commissioner Giblin made good points that the, um, that this was not like a coffee shop, some of the other uses. However, a marijuana store is very similar to any other type of store. And there is no behavior that is going on there that differentiates it from other stores. And there are currently those distance requirements at the state level where regardless of public comment, the state would deny based on that thousand foot limitation. And the town at the board of trustees level could also, which should also make that denial for that purpose. And there are affirmative representations that may need to be made during state application process that you are not within those distance requirements. And I believe also at the town level currently as it goes in, staff has an opportunity to review that, inform the board. And those notice requirements go out to, um, members of the public and neighboring, neighboring property owners when it goes through the board of trustees and it is going to be a public hearing at that level. I think the real question is, um, not necessarily on those stores, but on one production. And then also on cultivation as well as on testing facilities, of which there are none in Netherlands, nor will there ever be one in Netherlands. Um, whether the planning commission would like to also have the opportunity for a public hearing by special review? Because the, you, the, the review process of doing a special review is duplicative at the board of trustees level. So if the planning commission wants to have it come before them and then there will be a hearing on both the special review and on the license at the board of trustee levels, that would make some sense. But there won't be any issues in terms of transparency or a public hearing on any new marijuana license as it must by Netherlands current ordinance go before the board of trustees. I think the real question that needs to be considered when discussing a use by right versus, um, a special review is whether the planning commission also feels that it's appropriate to have a hearing before them to make a recommendation to the board of trustees. And on this particular amendment that we have proposed, I think it would be appropriate first to decide whether, um, you want to have that. I, I would also recommend you ask the town staff about the process and whether they, their feelings have it in terms of doing relatively duplicative work, whether they are, there is any additional protections for the public or whether, um, this is something I think the, the, the commission discussed, whether you guys would also like to have a hearing before it goes to the board of trustees. That's when a special review really makes sense.
Right, right. Thank you.
Um, can I ask David a, a question?
Hello? Hello?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry. This is, is this Karen?
Yes.
Okay. You have a question?
Um, yes. So the, the, um, the, it's only the, the retail stores that are licensed. Is that correct?
No, every single marijuana use must be licensed by both the local jurisdiction and the state.
Okay.
And they're two separate licenses. They will not issue a license until the local jurisdiction has issued theirs.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, um, back to Jim and Billy. So based on the comments we've heard, um, should, uh, do you guys feel comfortable, um, seeing it forward or would you like to discuss it some more, uh, since Julian's not here?
I, I still would be, this is Jim Reese. I would still be in favor of sending it forward with these changes that we made. I recall, and it's, it's just, you know, unfortunate that, uh, Julian can't be here. Uh, cause as the representative of the board, he was able to talk about some, some retail stuff. And I, I'm pretty sure that he was like, yeah, that's already been handled. And so that's the reason we didn't talk about, uh, the retail, uh, piece of it. But it's been since December and January since we're having some of these meetings. Uh, so it's kind of hard for me to remember all the details.
I, I can speak to that. So yeah, so originally all of this was kicked over to that marijuana advisory committee. And that committee felt that they were equipped and ready to tackle the retail marijuana store and the medical marijuana center licenses. But they wanted planning commission to weigh in on cultivation, product manufacturing and testing. So that proposal went back to the board of trustees that, that it be split up like that. And they did approve, um, in the kind of October, November time for us to do that. And so again, they're kind of that, that has always been a publicly vetted process that we would bring. again, they're kind of that, that has always been a publicly vetted process that we would break this out the way we have.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So everything you have in the R's there then is, are the recommendations that we made after we we did the work and the research and the, so I would, I would recommend, I'll let Billy say what he wants to say on that, but I'd recommend you go forward and vote on that tonight.
This is Billy. I, I, I agree. I feel like the red R's and other changes we made with deliberation and yeah, it'd be sweet, it'd be great to have trustee Taylor here, but he's not, but he, so he'll be hopefully there when this moves up to the Board of Trustees.
David seems so knowledgeable. I just had one quick question on the, the distance requirement because we do have the 500 feet and the 200 feet requirements. In our ordinance, we use this, a straight line from the primary entrance, the marijuana facility to the primary entrance of whatever the other facility is. And then we have a child licensed childcare facility and educational institution caveats in there. Is that the same way that the state measures it as well for that 1,000 foot requirement? Between retail facility? Is it a straight line?
It is a straight line and it is not from the door, which frankly, I think is superior to the state's version. The state first of all has a thousand feet. And it is from the property, the building line, the building in which the use takes place. So they take the closest point of the building and do a thousand feet to the closest point of the building in which the setback is required. So for instance, if you had a childcare facility and the state licensed childcare facility and you have a marijuana, proposed marijuana facility, they will take the closest corner of the building to where the marijuana facility is and measure that to the building and where the marijuana facility is. I would applaud the town on using the door because I think that that's a more appropriate measurement for the potential effect.
Okay. So that answered your question?
Yeah, is that, I was just curious to know how maybe we were being consistent with the measurements with state policy as well. Just curious. Thanks.
Good point.
I'd also add that numerous local jurisdictions have different methods of measuring than the state. And that is not uncommon. And I think that, I think it's appropriate to choose a measurement to require, a requirement that makes sense to this board rather than trying to mirror the states. The states will, both will be in play whenever any proposed license comes up within the town of Nederland.
Thank you. All right. To wrap this up, are there any other comments from the Planning Commission members before we decide what we want to do? Okay. Shall, do I have a motion on the table? Would someone like to make a motion?
Yes, this is Jim Reese. I make a motion that we approved the draft ordinance 819 with the zoning changes for marijuana cultivation, production, manufacturing and testing applications in the zones that we have designated here.
And Stephanie had a typo change.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Williams, may I make a point of order?
Yeah, David, is that you?
Yes, it is.
Well, okay, what?
Just regarding the language of the motion, based on the, the discussion that happened between the Planning Commission. I believe that the other amendment that we have requested, and it sounds as though the commission is in favor of is an amendment to allow retail or recreational marijuana, I don't, I don't have the exact language, but I think it's marijuana production facility be allowed as a special review in the CBD zone.
I, I thought we fixed that.
I was just for the motion in terms of amendments, that's all.
I'm wondering Jennifer, is it possible to make a motion that references the corrections that we made that is, that's on the screen tonight that include that? Or do each of those need to be listed separately? I'm curious.
Well, I think the motion really is a, a motion to recommend approval to of this draft ordinance to the Board of Trustees. I think the motion could be so that it's consistent with the table dated, what was the date of that table Miranda that you showed?
But all the data document is on my folder. I don't have my folder.
Oh, I'm sorry. I understand it's difficult through the Zoom process, but I do see that you have changed the marijuana production facility to an R in the table. My apologies.
Yeah, I thought, yes, I thought we had fixed that, David, sorry.
It's, it's entirely my fault. I'm not as familiar with trying to engage in this process through Zoom meetings. I know you guys will probably come old.
Yeah, we're, we're discussing amongst the, the commissioners right now. Thank you.
My apologies.
The, the date of this document, I guess Jim, if you wanted to add that, it's January 22nd is the date of that document that I use to update that table.
Okay, I recommend that we approve draft ordinance 819 with the zoning changes for marijuana cultivation and product manufacturing and testing facilities as listed on the table approved by the subcommittee on, I already forgot the date, I'm sorry.
January 22nd.
January 22nd, 2021.
I'll second that.
And that, that's, that includes Stephanie's typo?
We can, I can fix that. There's a, a provision in the ordinance that allows for those types of amendments.
All right. I just wanted to make sure we didn't forget about it.
And Karen's?
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second that motion, Billy.
Okay. Cynthia, did you take the vote?
Okay. Chair Williams?
Uh, yes.
Senator Blakemore? I, I'm sorry, I just realized that there's an issue. Let me fix my phone here. So the issue is that that document on the 20, that we adopted on the 22nd still has this as an N and the desire, that was an oversight, the desire is changing this to R. But I do think that amendment is still.
Well, that's, no, how we fix that?
Well, we, well, if we're adopting it based on the notes from the 22nd though, that's not a fix. Because this wasn't an N. So Jennifer, can you provide guidance? Cause this wasn't N and we want this R because that was an oversight.
Commissioner Williams, this is David Michael. I've been a land use attorney for a long time. I would agree with Miranda. I am, if you use the language of January 22nd, the, none of the amendments that were made tonight are included. The date should be as amended today's date.
It's gonna be May 27th if we don't do this soon.
Oh, I'm really confused now.
No, it makes sense.
This table is correct. So Jennifer, is there a way to make a motion that references this table that was corrected during the meeting based on the notes from January 22nd and the discussion tonight?
And I mean, you could go, we could go through each of them, each of the different columns or you could say, I'm trying to think of another way to do this. If you want to do a screenshot as identified in the document. So you can make the motion as identified in the document that's listed shown before the Planning Commission with the changes. And that is a screenshot version.
Highlighted.
I don't.
On 5/26/2020.
Yeah, because that one is correct, I believe.
Correct. What's before you is the screenshot I just took. That is correct.
That looks correct to me.
So I think the question is like, how do we word that? The alternative is to read it by each chain under each zone type.
So the motion would be a motion to recommend approval of ordinance, draft ordinance 819 with the amendments identified in the screenshot taken on, at 11:23 PM on May 26th. And also amending the, if you want to include the language about the other sections of the code. So it would be section one. Section one of the ordinance 16 dash 284 be removed that as a special review use. So that would be, that would be a motion that you could make.
So, so since Jim already made a, a motion, we need to amend that, amend that motion?
Jim could accept it if somebody wants to make a friendly amendment. And Jim could accept that friendly amendment.
Let me just ask a quick question here. Is this getting so complicated that it would really be better to get this all done correctly? And then we won't have to do a crazy amended vote to include all this stuff? I mean, I hate to push it off another month because we only meet once a month, but it seems like this is getting overly complicated.
Well, I was going to suggest that because I want to make sure we get all this correct.
Commissioner Williams, this is David Michael. May I make one point of order, please?
Okay, we've already closed the public session, but.
I, I understand. I, I, with all due respect and I, I understand that I'm asking for something that is a special grace by you. We have a business consideration that it is critical, it would be very critical that this get passed tonight. I would, I think that if I could, I, I've, I'm a member of, I've been a member of the Winter Park Planning Commission. I've been a land use for attorney for a long time. I do not believe that this has gotten overly complicated. A very simple motion that was the same as Mr. Reese made, asking for approval of the January 22nd approval, board has approved with the exception of correcting the typo as pointed out within the screenshot and with changing the, the amendment to that, changing the for marijuana infused products from a no to a R in the grid is all you need to say. And then you are there and I think this can move forward to the Board of Trustees. I do not believe it is complicated and I would urge the commission, you've had a long night, so I understand that you're tired to get this done so that you can move on with other matters. Thank you.
Well, I think that's what Jennifer suggested. But Jim, you need to think, just amend your motion accordingly to what, what Jennifer recommended.
I amend the motion as stated by Attorney Mathen.
Well, there you go. I mean, based upon the screenshot dated today at
Does he amend it or should we do a friendly amendment?
Well, unless, so so Jennifer, do we, do you have another Planning Commission member make a friendly amendment or can we, can Jim amend his at this point?
Or couldn't Jim just withdraw his and we just do a new one, a new motion?
Well, we've already had a second.
Oh.
So a friendly amendment would be appropriate. So if one of you wants to make a friendly amendment and Jim can accept that friendly amendment.
I'd make a friendly amendment that we, that we strike section 284 D or section 6284D. The part about narrowed commercials as special reviews, that that is strict and that we adopt the ordinance 819 as it was finalized in January, I think 22nd, 2021 with, with the amendments made on tonight, May 26th, 2021, that, that was, I believe captured in a screenshot, maybe right now at 11:30 PM.
Okay.
I accept that friendly amendment.
So, okay. So now we can take the vote? Cynthia?
Was that seconded then?
Uh, Jim accepted it.
It's gotten very interesting. Okay.
Just a quick with Jennifer to make sure that we're legal here.
That's fine. If he accepted the friendly amendment, you have a motion with a second on the table.
That, that's what I thought. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, Chair Williams?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Commissioner Giblin?
Yes.
Commissioner Herring?
Yes.
Commissioner Prey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you very much. David, thank you for your input, even though it was, it was sort of difficult between the public portion and the discussion amongst the commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams, and thanks to the rest of the board. I appreciate the, I was honored to have the opportunity to help.
Okay. Oh dear. All right. So we need to wrap up here. We have one item left, which is the town staff report and poor Karen gets shorted again.
Well, you know what? It's in the packet. My, my suggestion is you all, you know, read it if you haven't already. And if you have any questions, you can follow up with me by email. You guys have done an incredible job tonight, but you're already, what is it, four and a half hours into the meeting? So.
Yeah, okay. I read it. It's a good, good report. Thank you. Okay, so the last item that I want to bring up under other business is that we had, we have two vacancies that are is that we had, we have two vacancies that are coming up on the Planning Commission. And I would like Miranda to kind of give a status update on this, please.
Yep. So Chair Williams and Commissioner Giblin, both of their terms end as of June 1st this year. So we published the vacancies three weeks ago. And for the two vacancies, we received five applications. So all of those applications will go before the Board of Trustees on June 1st. And they will make a determination whether there will be a reappointment or if there will be new members appointed to the Planning Commission.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have any other business to bring up?
Yeah, this is Billy. None of this works. I was gonna, I was gonna bring that up. I know when Stephanie and Linda were back, were up for reappointment a while ago, that Roger spoke on their behalf. And, and I'm just making a request, if I feel like I've done a good job this year, that if any of you all are willing to speak on our behaves, I'd appreciate it.
Thanks for bringing that up, Billy.
Okay.
So that would just mean showing up at the Board of Trustees meeting and speaking during public comment.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, see, it used to be that the Planning Commission would make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees on either reappointment or new applicants. That has since changed. It, it was determined that there could be bias, obviously. And so it's now entirely up to the Board of Trustees and the mayor to, to make a recommend, I mean, to make an appointment. So everyone is free to, to show up and make any public comment at the Board of Trustees, rather than here at the Planning Commission meeting.
This is Jim Reese. I had a quick question for Miranda. If we weren't able to attend in person, could we submit a letter of support?
Yep, I would just need that by this Friday.
Okay. Well, I certainly am in favor of both you guys continuing in your current roles and hope that you get reappointed, and I will support you 100%.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay. Anything else? If not...
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Chris. You, you took...
This is Stephanie. I'll second.
Okay, do we have a second?
Stephanie seconded.
Okay. All in favor? Well, that's Cynthia's job.
Sorry about that. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Any against? Anyone to keep going?
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
We'll try to make these shorter in the future. Good night, everyone.
11:36 PM.
Thanks, everyone. Take care.
Thank you. Take care.